Call the Town Council meeting to order. Kelly or Sarah, can we do roll call, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Romack?
Here.
Vice Mayor Klobstad?
Here.
Mayor Zabreski?
Here.
Councilmember Henderson?
Here.
And I'll note, Councilmember Paulie is absent this evening.
Thank you. I'm going to ask the members of Troop 267, two of their leaders, to come up to the podium and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And briefly, can I ask, who were the Boy Scouts that just led us in the pledge? Can you just come back to the podium, just say who you are?
Charlie, can you push the button so that it's green?
There. I'm Charlie Myers.
I'm Ethan Edwards.
Thank you, Ethan and Charlie. And thank you, Scoutmaster Ryan. Okay, thank you very much. And now I'm going to turn it over to Chief Renfro for a commemoration. Chief?
Yeah, I'd like to report that unfortunately Brenda Lee, one of our Support Services Supervisors, passed away this last week. And I just wanted to share that Brenda Lee dedicated more than 25 years of outstanding service to the town, the police department, and the Truckee community. Beginning in her career in 1997 as an office assistant, too, in Animal Services here with the town. Her strong work ethic and commitment to the community quickly became evident, leading her to a promotion to Administrative Secretary in 2002. When Animal Services transitioned to the police department in 2014, Brenda seamlessly adapted and taking on the role of administrative technician and continuing to be a dependable member of our team. In 2015, she was promoted to Police Support Services Supervisor, where she excelled as a leader, mentor, and steady presence within the department. Her contributions were recognized when she was named Employee of the Year in 2016, a testament to the professionalism, compassion, and integrity she brought to her work every day. Brenda retired from the police department in 2023 after a remarkable career of service. On November 14th, she lost her courageous battle with cancer, and her passing is deeply felt by all who had the privilege of knowing her. I know John, Brenda's husband, is watching online tonight, and I wanted to reiterate Brenda's warmth, kindness, and dedication to countless lives in the town and our entire organization.
Thank you, Chief. And we're going to take just a minute of silence to reflect on her career and her public service, her friendship, and all that she did to serve our community. Okay, thank you. We'll now go on to general public comment. This is an opportunity for any member of the public to come up to the podium and speak for up to three minutes to the council on any matter that is not on tonight's agenda. Would anybody like to make a general public comment?
Good evening, Mayor Zabreski and Town Council. I'm here to support the adoption of Assembly Bill 1030, which allows local agencies to allow ADUs to be sold separately from the property that they're built on. I think it would be an important part of our push towards affordable housing or any kind of solution. We all know there's no silver bullet. This is just a drop in the bucket, but if you have enough drops, the bucket fills up. And I would appreciate if the council would seriously consider adopting this measure. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Would you mind providing your name I meant to ask?
Oh, sorry, Bill Kenny.
Bill Geddy. Thank you. Okay, it doesn't appear anyone else wants to make a general public comment, so we'll now move on to presentations. There's four of them. At the conclusion of all the presentations, we will have an opportunity for council and public comments, so I hope everyone can stay around for that. And we're going to start off with a proclamation, and I'd appreciate it if Chief Estes could join me at the podium.
I'm going to preface this proclamation by talking about me. It's a great honor. It is a great honor for me to provide this proclamation because it was 60 years ago I was a seasonal firefighter in Butte County. Spent three seasons at a place called Transfer Point up on Highway 32. And in looking up Brian Estes, I discovered, "You grew up in Butte County." That's where he got his start in life. And it's just, it's just a great coincidence for me and an honor because I remember fondly those years I spent in fire camp, fighting fires. And then the proclamation does not go near far enough to reflect the amazing career of Chief Estes. He had a long, illustrious, and distinguished career. He received over, he received three, what are they? Distinguished Director Performance Awards? Something along those lines, but a lot of accomplishments, a very varied career, and very distinguished. I think he's on the circuit now, just going from one place to another, receiving honors and expressions of appreciation. Okay, so on with the proclamation. Whereas Chief Brian Estes has honorably served the people of California for more than 35 years, dedicating his career with CAL FIRE to the protection of life, property, and the natural resources of our state. And whereas as Unit Chief of the CAL FIRE Nevada Yuba Placer Unit, Chief Estes has demonstrated exceptional leadership and professionalism while enhancing emergency operational readiness and supporting local government partners. And whereas his commitment to building regional relationships has improved coordination across local, state, and federal agencies, making significant enhancements to public safety and the protection of natural resources throughout our region. And whereas Chief Estes has been an unwavering partner to the town of Truckee, collaborating on many efforts, including carrying out the Wild Land Protection Agreement between the town, Truckee Fire Protection District, and CAL FIRE. And whereas the town of Truckee recognizes Chief Estes not only for his distinguished career, but for his leadership during wildfires and other emergencies in and near Truckee. And whereas his retirement marks the conclusion of a truly remarkable career and the town of Truckee extends its gratitude for his service to our residents and visitors, now therefore be a proclaim by the mayor of the town of Truckee with gratitude and appreciation to the unit chief, Brian Estes, for his outstanding service, leadership, and dedication, and best wishes for certainly a well-earned retirement. So let's give the chief a hand. And what's really special, I'm going to ask you to say a few words, but what's really special as well, we'll hold this one. This is, and this is a winter fire downtown Truckee. And what's nice about this, this is not a wildfire. This is a solar sunset fire, the best kind to have. So, thank you very, very much. Say a few words, please.
Well, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, thank you very, very much. It's very, it means a lot to me to have those nice words said. I'm going to double down on your coincidental history, and I'll tell you that not only did I grow up in Butte County, but my dad taught me to deer hunt at Transfer Point when I was just about 12 or 13 years old. So there's a coincidence there for sure, yeah. I don't know, maybe, yeah. And I taught at the Mount Lassen Boy Scout Camp in Butte Meadows for my younger years, too, and was a Boy Scout for all of my younger years. So you guys are doing a great, great thing. It's one of the greatest organizations we have in this country, so keep it up. And ironically, the last thing I'll say is I was just telling Chief Renfro and Jen about, there's not many sights that are more inspiring than when you come off Donner Summit into Truckee this time of year at 4:30 in the afternoon, and you see basically that. So what a, what a great night, what a coincidence. And I cannot thank you enough. It's been an amazing career. My nine years as the fire chief here in the Nevada Yuba Placer Unit have been certainly, I believe, the highlight of my career. They've probably been the most challenging and had the highest tempo and the highest pace, but also very much so the most satisfying. And a big part of that has been, you know, working with people like Jen, who's just been an amazing partner as your town manager. You know, really taking the lead and the leadership from the town and from Jen and the support of your council has brought forth the largest Wild Land Protection Agreement that exists in our department and exists in the state of California. And that doesn't, I don't take that lightly. It takes leadership and it takes progressive thinking to bring those things forward. And I think that, you know, my folks back here, which I'm very grateful to have, some representatives of Battalion 15 and Station 50, Chief Richter, who's your newest Assistant Chief that we were able to put into place here this year, to have a member of my executive staff here on the east side in the Truckee Basin and North Tahoe all the time. Chief Smith, Thomas Smith, one of our two battalion chiefs here. And I'd be remiss if I didn't introduce Chief Jim Hudson, who has been named as my successor and the next unit and fire chief for the Nevada Yuba Placer Unit. He's been my deputy chief for seven or eight of my nine years and just the most loyal and amazing partner that a fire chief could ever ask for. And I think he's going to serve the town of Truckee and the constituents and the residents and everyone up here on the east side very, very well into the future. So I cannot thank you enough. It's been an amazing journey. Mayor, thank you. Council, thank you. Jen, thank you very, very much. Chief Renfro, thank you. So, very much, thank you.
Okay, Jen, you want to go ahead and take the next item on the presentations?
Happily, and I'll pass it right over to Hillary, who's going to give us a dark skies update.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I'm excited to share a brief recap of our dark skies program, which has recently wrapped up. This has been a multi-pronged effort to raise awareness about the importance of dark skies and to promote dark skies compliant lighting in Truckee. As you may recall, our efforts began about two years ago with an educational campaign about the importance of dark skies, which we developed in partnership with East River PR. And then this past year, we partnered with Truckee Cultural District to expand the educational campaign through arts programming around the theme of dark skies. This project included outreach through a variety of different media and programming, including a cover story in Nevada County Arts Council's Muse Literary Publication, which has a distribution of 10,000 copies, online videography and social media throughout the campaign, and tabling with informational materials and dark skies swag, which was very popular at events like Truckee Thursday and the Townwide Block Party event. Truckee Cultural District also facilitated five different dark skies themed exhibits with audiences of all ages. The events included a dark skies open mic with 50 attendees at the Truckee Literary Festival, student art activities exploring the importance of our night sky in partnership with Sierra Watershed Education Partnership and TTUSD. And that collaboration culminated in a student art exhibit here at Town Hall this summer, which just came down recently and was absolutely gorgeous artwork by our participating students. And Truckee Cultural District coordinated literary and photography workshops around the dark skies theme. And as a grand finale, Truckee Cultural District organized a second "Don't Be Afraid of the Dark" photo contest this summer in partnership with Nevada City and the Sierra Sun. This year's competition received entries from 138 photographers, and entries really showcased our amazing dark skies and the artistic talent in our region. On the right are a few of photos from our well-attended awards reception, which we held in September. And I'm excited to share the top photos from this year's competition. So the competition awarded awards in categories for professional, amateur, and youth photographers. And these are our top three professional photographers who were selected. We have on the top left Daniel Heck, Bryce Windsor, and Jeremy Jensen. In our amateur category, first place went to Rachel McCullough at the top left, second place Nick Schwartz, and third place Max Liebman. And in our youth category, first and second place on the top were both by Drew Basile and third place by Lucy Greenwood. So these are just some of the selection of amazing photographs we received in the competition this year. This year, we added another fun category to the awards, which was the Best of the East and Best of the West, with the Best of the East winning photograph by Jeremy Jensen, selected by our mayor, Jan Zabreski. And the Best of the West winning shot by Allison Colt on the right was selected by Nevada City Mayor, Adam Klein. And then the winners of the photo contest were invited to participate in a dark skies photography workshop up on Donner Summit with photographer Grant Kay, which was a great way to continue to learn about and experience our night skies. So I'd like to share a brief video that Court Levy helped put together about that event.
Hey, I'm Grant Kay. I'm thrilled to be here on Donner Summit, getting ready to host a photography workshop with some of the winners of the Night Sky photo contest. This workshop is a fantastic opportunity to emphasize the significance of having pristine dark skies for everyone in Truckee to appreciate and enjoy. To me, the night sky is a peaceful place to go out and retreat. It's a nice, quiet time of night to escape the hustle and bustle of daily life. The night sky is special. It's pretty, pretty much like a connection to this magical other part of the world. It's just, I don't know, it's just incredible. It brings me a sense of peace.
What I like about night skies is they're pretty.
I fell in love with the dark skies when I moved down here, almost 10 years ago. So when I came out here, and the skies were so dark, then you could see, visibly see the Milky Way without anything. Just look up and you could see it. Having dark skies is really important for just the circle of life in general.
Hey, I'm Grant Kay. I'm thrilled to be here on Donner Summit, getting ready to host-
We'll pause that. So moving on to the more technical side of our dark skies program, the town also partnered with the Climate Transformation Alliance and Sierra Business- Sierra Business Council worked with the town to develop a menu of rebates based on the number of light fixtures replaced, with additional amounts available for fixtures with motion sensors, which is a best practice for reducing energy use and light pollution. The program was available for 15 months, and during that time, we had 46 participants who together replaced 250 light fixtures throughout town with a total rebate amount of just over $16,000. These photos provide a great example of some of the key features of dark sky compliant lighting. On the left, we have the light fixtures that were installed prior to the retrofits. And on the right, we have some post-installed lighting fixtures. You can see that they are typically shielded and downward facing to avoid light pollution and typically warmer light tones as well. As I mentioned, an additional impact of these lighting fixture retrofits is to increase energy efficiency. To replace light fixtures had an anticipated energy savings of over 1,500 kilowatt hours in the greenhouse gas savings of about a third of a metric ton of carbon dioxide, I suppose, per year.
Thank you very much, Hillary. And then we'll move on to the-
...of incentive and service awards tonight. And just as a reminder, our incentive awards are awards that our employees nominate their fellow coworkers for based on town values of integrity, teamwork, accountability, commitment, and excellence. So every quarter, our employees have an opportunity to nominate a fellow coworker for some outstanding work that they've done. And we had some really great nominations, as always. I'm excited to read those for you. Before I do that, our annual service awards, we have a number of employees that celebrated five years with the town this year. Chantel Bernberg, Logan McDonald, Brittany Johansson, Michael Brott, Erin McNutt, Lynn Baumgartner, myself, I'm happy to have been here for five years, Adelia Teal, Tiffany Hembrik, and Jacob Sinder. For 10 years, we have Scott Mathot, who's here with us, Sarah Condon, Stephen- Angela Smith, Lisa Madden, and Jesse Martinez. And a remarkable 20 years with the town, Sergeant Andrew Holbrook. So we celebrated those at our all-employee meeting earlier this month. It's great to see so many town employees staying with the town for such long careers. So our first incentive award was presented to Lynn Baumgartner. She's our program analyst for housing. And Lynn was nominated by Andrea Fernandez for integrity, teamwork, accountability, commitment, and excellence. And as always, I'm going to read what Andrea wrote about Lynn so you can hear the great work that Lynn was doing and continues to do. Lynn brings a mix of creativity, resourcefulness, and steady determination to everything she does. She's constantly finding new and practical ways to address one of the hardest issues our community faces, housing. It's a complex, ongoing challenge, but Lynn approaches it with focus and genuine commitment to improving people's lives. The programs she's helped create have made a real difference. I personally know several people in our community who are better, are in a better place because of programs like Rooted Renters and Lease to Locals. And I know there are many, many more. Working with Lynn and Laurel on the Housing Equity Framework was a great experience. Lynn was open, collaborative, and always willing to share her knowledge and perspective. She has a thoughtful and grounded way of working through tough topics, and she's skilled at finding balanced, realistic solutions. Her professionalism and clear communication make her an excellent partner to work with. She also has the best, sometimes very random stories, and during our team meetings, I'm always excited to hear what she has to say, work-related or not. She's approachable, genuine, and deeply committed to the community. Her creativity and persistence stands out, and her leadership on housing efforts continues to make a meaningful impact in Truckee. So congratulations to Lynn. Andrea also nominated Carissa Binkley for integrity, teamwork, accountability, commitment, and excellence. And Andrea said that Carissa is also an incredible coworker, and she somehow manages to keep up with every board meeting due to her full-time job, take care of a toddler, and still shows up every day with a positive attitude and a deep knowledge of what's going on across so many projects. What Andrea is referring to there is Carissa is our go-to person because she literally watches every public meeting in the community and knows what every board is talking about and often highlights that for us when there's something that maybe we've missed. So she's very committed to the public process and understanding what's happening there. Carissa's enthusiasm and thoughtfulness make her such a supportive and inspiring person to work with. The work Carissa did with the River Revitalization Committee on the R3 playbook was especially impressive. Her leadership, organization, and creativity helped shape something that will have a lasting impact on the community at large and that area in particular. You can see how much care and intention went into every part of it and how her efforts will likely have a ripple effect on future projects and community initiatives. Beyond her incredible work, Carissa is awesome to be around. She's supportive, approachable, and always willing to lend a hand or share a good laugh. Her patient, her practice of professionalism, awareness, and genuine care for her community makes her an invaluable part of our team and a true example of what the town's core values look like in action. Bronn Roberts nominated Mariah Stone. And Mariah is fairly new to our organization. She's working in our Communications Department. And Mariah was nominated for integrity, teamwork, accountability, commitment, and excellence. Bronn nominated Mariah for her exceptional commitment and contributions to planning of the first-ever community block party. Since joining the Communications Department in May, Mariah has embraced every task with enthusiasm, professionalism, and a strong sense of responsibility. Although she was unable to attend the block party the day it happened, she was doing behind-the-scenes work that was critical to its success. Mariah played a key role in designing the event flyer and outreach materials, distributing them to businesses and community boards, and personally engaging with local businesses in the event area. She also assisted with event layout planning, supported the design of the event materials across multiple divisions, and helped source vendors and manage contracts through the support of our clerks team. Mariah's attention to detail, creativity, and willingness to step in wherever needed reflects her commitment to excellence and her integrity in carrying out every responsibility to the highest standard. Her contributions were invaluable in ensuring the event was well-organized, well-promoted, and ultimately successful. I only wish she could have been there to see how hard her, how her hard work brought the event to life for nearly 900 community members. Mariah exemplifies commitment, excellence, integrity, and teamwork through her dedication, reliability, and outstanding support of the community block party planning process. Along a similar note, Bronn also nominated Nick Holden and Dave from our Public Works Department, also for their outstanding support during the execution of the block party. Their dedication and positive attitudes played a pivotal role in making the event a success. From setup to cleanup, they were there, hands-on, and available to help with any task, such as setting up tents and chairs, managing the public works equipment on display, overseeing power boxes for food vendors, maintaining the water station and seating areas, and assisting with final cleanup to ensure downtown was left spotless. They worked seamlessly with each other, supported the project manager and Crux rental team, and consistently maintained enthusiasm throughout a long-demanding event. Their willingness to go above and beyond, coupled with their commitment to excellence and accountability, ensured that everything ran smoothly. Their teamwork and reliability not only made the event successful, but also embodied the town spirit of collaboration and service. Nick Holden and Dave demonstrated all of our town's core values in service to our community. James Blattler nominated Connor Drews for teamwork and commitment. Connor not only does good, not good in, sorry, let me start- Connor not only does good, not good, sorry, let me start over. Not enough good things can be said about Connor, but I'm nominating Connor for this incentive award specifically because of the above and beyond work that he volunteered to take on for the sake of the emergency communication reliability. Despite the IT team being saturated with the many critical projects around town, when the Office of Emergency Services approached IT with an idea of exploring a new mobile carrier for OES and the police department, Connor quickly volunteered to take on this project. This shows Connor's commitment to town services and constant willingness to be a great teammate. Connor never blinks on an opportunity to help out the town team, and when he takes on a project, he sees it through and should be recognized for these qualities. Chris Hardy nominated Jenny in our Administrative Services Department. And Chris wrote, "I'd like to take a moment to recognize someone who quietly makes a big difference behind the scenes." Jenny from our finance division. Jenny has been helping the IT team with some pretty complicated billing and software challenges. One example is the work she's done figuring out how to code printer overages. Sounds simple, but it's been anything but. With three new printers requested after implementation and more printing happening across departments, keeping the billing clean and accurate has required critical thinking and persistence. Jenny brings both. She shows up with a plan, builds clear spreadsheets that help us get charges to the right GLs, and takes on work so departments don't have to get lost in coding details. It's a perfect example of how small things done well keep the whole organization running smoothly. What stands out most is how Jenny does this in the Truckee way. Respectful, service-minded, and always ready to help others succeed. Thanks Jenny for your effort, your problem-solving mindset, and for making sure our people keep moving forward. Then we have Hillary on behalf of all of Neighborhood Services and Sustainability nominated Robert Ellis, Adam Lindruth, Baldo Ramirez, Abel Isles, Chris Leong, Tom Pratt, Jack Weir, Nick Swartzky, and Kaitlin Young for teamwork and commitment. If you haven't noticed, there's been a lot of moving of people in offices here in Town Hall. Hillary nominated this group for their works in doing outstanding teamwork and commitment to support all of the logistics required for the Town Hall shuffle. This fall, Neighborhood Services and Sustainability moved offices to the location right across from council chambers where SBC used to be. This move was a heavy lift, literally, requiring a significant amount of furniture moving, furniture assembly, and deep cleaning to get the new space ready for our department. Facilities and custodial staff did an outstanding job exemplifying the values of teamwork and commitment to get the space functional and ready. If you haven't seen the new office space, stop by and say hi. Neighborhood Services' move was just the first domino in a planned Town Hall office reshuffle that is still in process. So Hillary and team thanked the dedicated work of Facilities and the custodian team for their ongoing teamwork, commitment, and thoughtful approach throughout this multi-step Alex and Connor nominated Kimmy Bullock for her integrity, teamwork, accountability, and commitment to excellence. They wrote, "I think some of the most important people working in government are the ones that keep the ship afloat even when people don't always recognize all of their hard work and commitment. I think Kimmy is one of the most valuable members of our team and sometimes goes without the recognition she deserves. All within a single day, I have seen her work on purchase cards, facilitate yoga for town employees, drive to Taco Bell for an employee's birthday just to make their day. From the very first day at the town a few years ago, Kimmy has consistently been a paragon of kindness, humor, and warmth while demonstrating an impressive efficiency, care, and skill with everything she does. Not to mention legendary patience and tenacity when handling all of IT's patient testing billing situations. She does so much not only in the realm of work but also on a personal level for everyone. We're lucky to have her as both a coworker and a friend. We could write one antidote after another of how much we appreciate Kimmy, but we'd be here all day." And then lastly, Hillary and the entire department head team nominated Bronn Roberts for her commitment and excellence. This fall, our communications program manager Bronn demonstrated the core values of excellence and commitment in her efforts leading the organization and the execution of the town-wide community block party. Aligning with our town council priority to enhance community engagement and public outreach, the block party was dreamed up as a new, fun, and informative way to engage with community members, share information about the town, special districts, and nonprofit services, and just to celebrate Truckee. With 900 block party attendees, over 40 participating organizations, and a lineup of art, music, and dance entertainment, the event has received rave reviews from town staff, participating community organizations, and attendees. Organizing this event required significant creativity, attention to detail, and expert-level cat herding, so kudos to Bronn for her excellence and commitment in leading this event. And that's all of the awards for tonight.
Okay, let's just give a round of applause.
Actually have a number of updates tonight, so also, you know, get comfortable. First, I want to congratulate and acknowledge our new assistant town manager, starting December 21st, Hillary Hobbs. Hillary went through a competitive process. We had 49 applicants that applied. We did interviewed about 10 applicants, and Hillary stood out throughout the whole process for her creativity, her readiness to step in whenever needed, her commitment to the town and to the employees and the organization, her very steady and thoughtful approach that she brings to every challenge. I will say that we are definitely better because Hillary is part of our team, and I really look forward to seeing her in this new role and everything she's going to bring to that. So congratulations, Hillary. She will start in that role on December 21st, and then she has the unique privilege of being both the assistant town manager and director of Neighborhood Services for some period of time until we backfill that director role. So give her a little grace as she covers both positions for the time being. Also, congratulations, Councilmember Henderson, on your appointment to the Abundance Fellowship. There was a press release. Also, Councilmember Henderson is a champion for Holidays Not Forgotten. That is a new initiative in town where you can sponsor local children. Ten or so children still waiting to be sponsored, so if you're willing and interested in doing that, you can.
I just want to say, Holidays Not Forgotten.
Just a few more, Mayor, I promise. Thanks for your patience. Next week on Tuesday, there's a few cards on the back table, I think, but there is a community open house retirement celebration for Dan Wilkins. After 29 years with the town, Dan is retiring at the end of this month. We're going to miss him, but we're inviting the community to come, give their thanks to Dan, maybe share some stories, and just have a good time. That is taking place at the Community Arts Center in downtown Truckee, Tuesday, the 2nd, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., so we hope you can join us for that. Following that, on December 9th is our next regular meeting in this room, but it will look very different. We are starting the meeting out with a joint Planning Commission Town Council meeting from 5:00 to 7:00, and that will be all things housing element. It's going to be set up as a workshop, so there'll be tables here in the room. We'll be having the planning commissioners and council members disperse through the tables, opportunity for community engagement, and it's all about where are we going to put the density that the state is telling us we need to plan for? So please join that conversation. It's feedback for the Planning Commission and the council and the staff as we move forward with developing that draft. We'll take a short break from 7:00 to 7:30 so we can reset up the room and then reconvene for the council meeting portion at 7:30. That is when we will also have a Key to the Town for Dan Wilkins, another recognition for him, and of course, our changeover of mayor and vice mayor along with a couple other business items before we break for the holiday season. And on that note, really asking everybody to plan ahead this holiday season. Town Hall is going to be closed December 19th and reopening January 5th, so that's the two weeks of Christmas and New Year's. We've done this for a couple of years, so hopefully it's not a surprise. We'll have building inspections going, but we will have pretty limited engineering inspections, other services. Some employees are working, others are having an opportunity to take time off. But if you need something from Town Hall, please plan ahead and come before the 19th. That's your best way to know that you'll have a staff person available to help you. Chief Estes, I just would like to say thank you very much. It's been a pleasure working with you. It's been great to expand the wildfire protection agreement, learned from you. And Chief Hudson, look forward to building new relationship with you and moving forward with Cal Fire. And then my last thing, Mayor, just as we are gathering in the week of Thanksgiving, really want to pause, reflect, and thank our community, our local businesses, our staff, our elected officials, town council included. This is what brings the heart and kindness and resilience to our community and what we're all about. So like to wish everybody a really great Thanksgiving, safe travels if you're traveling, and enjoy this time with your family, friends, and loved ones. That's all I have.
you to everyone here and the new fire chief, excited to work with you as well. Thank you also to the Boy Scouts, great job. You're always welcome to come back and lead us in the pledge. I'm going to say a lot of thanks, it is gratitude month after all. Just appreciate Jen highlighting our employee incentives since Bronn's still here. Again, kudos to you for your amazing work at the block party. I'm so glad that you were recognized by your coworkers. It was just such a wonderful event. And then I noticed you recognize Public Works and Holden was one of those, and I just wanted to highlight him at the event. You know, you mentioned all the things he did before and after. He was one of the guys standing by the trucks and helping my five-year-old out of what does this do and what does that do? So just incredible staff members that are always willing to go above and beyond. And then I did just want to add, I think it's great we're doing this for Dan Wilkins, I would suggest we turn it into a roast. Seems like that's what Mr. Wilkins really needs, so maybe think about that for next week. Thank you.
Councilmember Henderson.
Okay, I have a few words as well. First, for the chief, I just wanted to say a huge heartfelt congratulations to you on your retirement and thank you so much for everything that you have done for so many years for this entire region. It's truly, truly admirable. I think we all know that wildfire is one of the greatest threats to our entire region, and preventing wildfire isn't a partisan issue, it's a life and safety issue. It's an economic issue. None of us want to lose our homes or our businesses in a wildfire, and it's the work that you and your entire team does every single day, day in and day out, to prevent the threat of catastrophic wildfire, to mitigate that risk, and to respond when fires do break out to keep us all safe. So you are a true hero. I hope you know that, everyone here. You are true heroes in the work that you do every single day, and I know that, you know, not everyone gets to see what you do day in and day out. So just thank you so much from the bottom of my heart for everything that you have done. A couple of other quick comments. So dark skies, I just, I think gratitude is very much going to be the theme, you know, of the month, and I want to thank everyone here at Town Hall, all of our partner agencies, our council members who prioritize this in our community, who has really embraced this initiative. To me, this is a win-win in so many ways. It cultivates community connection, youth engagement with all of our youth who submitted in the, for the photos, reduced energy use, environmental stewardship, and so much more. And then finally, I want to say congratulations to everyone, both who received their incentive awards and for your work anniversaries. We really do have the best staff here at Town Hall. We're so, so fortunate, and they work incredibly hard, they care, they come up with the most innovative solutions under really challenging conditions sometimes. They respond to community emergencies, some of them are here until 10, might be 11 o'clock tonight, I don't know, it's going to be a late one, I think, for council meetings, and just their devotion is so incredibly admirable. So congratulations to everyone on their awards.
Well, I don't think I could add anymore to that. Very well said, both Councilmember Romack and Councilmember Henderson. I echo your thoughts and your gratitude, Chief Estes. It's been such a pleasure, and we have, you are right, we have really gone far in this region, and it is great thanks to you as well. I would just like to add that with dark skies, we have done so much, we've accomplished so much, we've educated people, there's still a lot of opportunity out there. I mean, my next target is going to be Festoon Lighting, just to put everybody on notice because that kind of drives me crazy, or at least put a time limit on it. But there's still opportunities, but we've really done a lot, we've accomplished a lot. And kudos to all of our employees for their anniversaries and their recognition. This is my favorite night is when we get to hear those incentive awards because it really allows me the opportunity to sit in somebody else's shoes or at their desk and see the impact of their fellow employees on them. And that is so important, that is something that we all can bring to every day of our lives because we all have an influence and an impact on those around us. And I would like us to always find a way to do good in our community because there is so much good being done and to be done. So thank you.
My colleagues covered it really well. I don't need to add to it. I would just, I hope staff has looked at the comment from Rolf Godan on the dark skies point he made, and then there was the point about Festoon Lighting we just heard, which is an important one as well. In any case, yeah, thank you everyone, to my colleagues for having covered it all for me, and now's an opportunity for public comment. Just go ahead and come up to the podium, you'll have three minutes if you would state your name first, that would be great. And given it's Director Diamond, remember it's three minutes, Diamond.
It won't even take three minutes. I just wanted to thank the chief and congratulate you from my position on the airport board for your participation in our fire mitigation partnership, making that happen, to all of Cal Fire who's participated in that, and just best of luck to you. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Chair Diamond. Okay, no one else, no one in uniform, everyone's going to hold their peace. There must be more parties to come than, I guess. Okay. So now we can, maybe we should take a five-minute break. Let's take five minutes and then we'll come back to the consent calendar. Let's take five minutes and then we'll come back to the consent calendar. Back in the, are we good?
You're good now.
Okay, we're moving on to the consent calendar. There's 11 items. I'm going to go through them, they're considered non-controversial unless they're polled. We'll just submit it for a council vote. First item is minutes from the last meeting, November 10th, 2025. That was a special meeting. 6.2 is contract amendment with Civic Plus LLC for website design and hosting. 6.3 is the Truckee Public Improvement and Engineering Standards Update. 6.4 is a resolution ratifying amendments to the 2025 California Fire Code adopted by the Truckee Fire Protection District. 6.5 is the 2025 Roadway Vegetation Management Project, that's C2614, notice of completion. 6.6 is the Riverview Sports Park Trail Connection Project, that's C2318, again, notice of completion. 6.7 is our fiscal year 2025-26 claim for state transit assistance funds. 6.8 is the sign shop equipment purchase. 6.9 is the side letter with employee groups for 2026 dental, fixed rates, and safety shoe reimbursement adjustment. 6.9 is the side letters with employee groups for 2026, I just read that one. 6.10 is accept the quarter ended June 30, 2025 treasurer's report. And finally, 6.11 is accept the quarter ended September 30, 2025 treasurer's report. Does anyone on council wish to pull an item? See none? Does anyone on staff wish to pull an item?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to pull an item? See no one, see no one approaching the podium? Do we have a motion on the consent calendar?
So moved.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. It passes unanimously. Now we'll move on to the discussion items. So 7.1 is the General Plan Implementation Ordinance, and it looks like Laura Daye is going to lead us in that discussion.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm here tonight to talk about our second round of amendments to implement the general plan. This went to Planning Commission in October, and they made a recommendation on Development Code amendments for implementing the general plan, zoning map amendments, general plan land use map cleanup amendments, and some regular Development Code cleanups. And tonight is your opportunity to review this and provide any feedback to staff. So as part of our Development Code amendments for general plan implementation, we have the creation of a new Business Innovation Zoning District, updates to the Highway Commercial Zoning District, and some cleanup amendments. The zoning map amendments are intended to ensure consistency with the general plan land use designations, and we have some amendments to the land use diagram in the general plan, and as I mentioned, some general cleanups. So council's role is to review the proposed amendments and determine whether they support implementation of the 2040 general plan as envisioned by you. Our role as staff is to propose amendments to the Development Code to ensure consistency with the new general plan, propose amendments that would achieve the goals and visions of the general plan, and take direction from the council on how best to implement your vision. So our first topic tonight is the Business Innovation Zoning District. This is in Pioneer Commerce Center Phase 1, which is to the south of Trails End and to the north of Highway 80. In the general plan, this designation was developed that allows industrial, flex space, and customer-serving industrial and service commercial uses. Some examples were breweries, coffee roasters, fitness centers. Also included were work-live units and workforce housing. So what we are proposing is a new zoning district to implement this vision in the plan as directed by Land Use Element Action LU 1.8. As I mentioned, this applies to Pioneer Commerce Center Phase 1, and this was formerly designated in the previous general plan as industrial and is currently zoned manufacturing. When the Pioneer Commerce Center was approved in 2002, there were broader ranges of uses allowed through a plan development than would otherwise be allowed in the M zoning. And as part of the general plan adoption process, one of the topics that was discussed was how to come up with a designation that would reflect the way that this phase of the project has developed over time with a mixture of light industrial and commercial uses. So the Business Innovation Zoning District would allow those flex industrial spaces and those other uses that I mentioned. The zoning standards that we came up with reflect staff's recommendations and input from the property owner, Sierra Mancuso. We worked with Sierra to review the current uses that are allowed through the plan development in the underlying manufacturing zoning and identify uses that would be compatible with the new Business Innovation Designation. So we incorporated the existing uses, made a few changes to ensure consistency with other town zoning regulations, and added uses that we felt were consistent with the vision of the general plan. So there are a few different sections of the code that these amendments would apply to. And the Planning Commission did their review, they made a few recommendations. One was to remove commercial parking and vehicle storage as a use. They recommended in the manufacturing zoning district to require a use permit for breweries, and then to add breweries as an allowed use in general, commercial, and service commercial with a use permit. So if the council supports those recommendations from the Planning Commission, including adding the brewery use to the commercial zones, staff added an additional edit to Table 2-7 to clarify how that would work in a commercial zone to ensure that it's still consistent with the intent of commercial zoning districts. So how we had previously written it was, in a manufacturing zone, a brewery would have to be at least half production use. So we just flipped that and said if it's in a commercial zone, it has to be at least half commercial. So it could be restaurant, bar, taproom, anything like that. Our second discussion topic is the Highway Commercial Zoning District. We have a few areas over by Coldstream that still have this zoning designation. And in the general plan, there were some policies and actions that directed us to look at transitioning away from freeway-oriented development and replacing the CH zoning with a new zoning that would better reflect the corresponding land use designations, which are commercial. So the original purpose of the CH zoning was to provide highway and tourist-related services, and the general plan really looked at transitioning away from that. And as we were considering what the appropriate type of zoning would be for this area of town, we looked at creating a new designation or using zoning that we already had, and we felt the general commercial would be an appropriate use of zoning, because it would allow a broad range of commercial uses. So there would be uses allowed in us that aren't currently allowed, and it would better serve the nearby residents and visitors in the surrounding neighborhoods, rather than being focused on providing services to freeway users. And we think it would be consistent with the general plan direction to move away from freeway-oriented development. So that would include a few amendments to the Development Code and then also amending the zoning map to change the zoning designation. We have a list of cleanup amendments, which we don't have to go through. We can come back to this if you have specific questions on any of these items. These are all proposed to ensure that the Development Code is consistent with the general plan. And then we have a number of zoning map amendments. This is creating the new Business Innovation Zoning District. This is addressing those highway commercial pieces. We have some changes to the commercial core overlay in downtown that was directed in the general plan. We have a parcel over on Sierra Drive that we're proposing to change to medium-density residential, consistent with the general plan. There are some public facilities zone changes we're recommending where Alder Creek Middle School currently is, that's currently zoned planned community. There's some other public facilities zoning we're proposing where Sierra College is, and some open space and rail transportation corridor areas. And then more rail transportation corridor. And some open space along the creek near Highway 89 South. And then when it comes to our land use diagram, there were a few cleanups. This is the map that's in the general plan. As part of the mapping, there were some things that got changed incorrectly. So there were some parcels at Donner Lake that were changed to rural residential, which would apply to large acreage parcels, typically where people have horses. So that was a mistake that we're correcting here by changing that to very low-density residential. And then there was a piece where the homeowner's beach is at Donner Lake that was inadvertently changed to residential, and that should be open space recreation. We also have a list of cleanup amendments that we're proposing. These are ones that are not related to the general plan implementation. Again, we don't have to go through all of these, but we can circle back if we need to. And the commission, when they made their recommendation, they recommended approving the general plan implementation and Development Code amendment items with those edits I mentioned related to breweries and removing the commercial vehicle parking from the biz zone. So our recommendation tonight is that the council conduct a public hearing and take the following actions, which would be introducing ordinance 2025-10 to adopt the amendments in support of the general plan implementation, adopt resolution 2025- adopt Resolution 2025-69, which would adopt the general plan land use diagram cleanups, and determine the amendments to be exempt from SEQA. And that's all I have for the staff presentation. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Laura. We'll start with Councilmember Henderson.
Well, one, thank you. That was an incredibly efficient presentation. I was like, we're going to be here all night, and maybe we're not. For the highway commercial moving toward general commercial zoning, I mean, what we're really doing is just providing significantly more flexibility in commercial uses in those parcels, right?
Correct.
And then just for the parcels that inadvertently were changed to rural residential down by Donner Lake, changing to very low-density residential, just remind me, how many dwelling units per acre is that?
One to two, I believe. I spoke to one of the property owners who got our postcard and had questions about that. And I looked up his property today, and that was the density.
Okay. Okay. That's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Roemack.
Thank you. Laura, you just started speaking to one of my questions. What was outreach done? I mean, you mentioned Sierra Mancuso on that property, but was there other outreach on some of these other properties?
Yeah, we sent a postcard to the affected property owners. And I have heard from a few of them who just had questions about the cleanups. They didn't have any issues with it once I explained what we were doing.
Great. Thank you. And then can you explain the difference? I believe this was in our council questions, but I didn't retain what the full answer was. But in Planning Commission's recommendation on changing breweries to being allowed with a use permit, what is the difference between what was originally proposed and permits and, yeah, all of that?
Yeah, so we proposed it as, I believe it was permitted in business innovation and then either permitted or a minor use permit in manufacturing. And the Planning Commission felt that because we're trying to conserve our manufacturing floor space, that having it as a use permit would be appropriate in that particular zone.
Great. Thank you. I think that's it, but thank you and your team for, yeah, finding errors and correcting them all the time. You know, we really appreciate your attention to detail.
Vice Mayor Klosdod.
Just continuing briefly on the brewery issue. There's already one in this area, correct?
There's a couple. They were approved as production uses with an accessory tasting room, I think is what we called it at the time. So this would allow us a little bit more flexibility.
Okay. And if we didn't make this change, would those become existing nonconforming?
You could still do a production use with an accessory bar or other type of use that wouldn't be allowed in manufacturing.
Okay. With a use permit.
That would just be, if the underlying use is permitted, then the accessory use would, it's typically a zoning clearance.
Okay. Great. So just for community benefit, I just want to clarify the ADU and JDU not counting towards the maximum density on residential zones. That's not really our policy. That's the state policy, correct? And we're just putting it in here.
Yeah, the state has some different ways they define ADUs in terms of what it counts towards and what it doesn't. But it's not counted towards the density.
Just to be clear. So you didn't talk about it in your presentation, but the changes on the open space requirements and not allowing setbacks to be counted as open space, is that a big change that we're implementing? Or is that something that's just nuanced? Because it just caught my eye. I didn't realize we were making that change.
Was that one of the cleanups?
Yeah, I think so. No? Well, I don't know if it was a cleanup or not. And what this, and really what my question is, where does this get implemented? It's only in future developments, I'm assuming?
I'm not sure what that's referring to. I didn't write all of the updates, but I did.
I hope not. It would have taken you a year.
I didn't make them all in the code. Do you know which section that was in?
I didn't make note of it. That's something I can follow up with you on.
Okay. Because we didn't change anything that would be, you know, policy-related. It was just some, we added clarifying languages to a few different sections. So there shouldn't be anything in there that would, you know, change how we apply.
We can try to look for that if you have other questions and come back.
Yeah. And again, it was just really more of a, I love what we are, what I think we're going to accomplish with that, but I wanted to clarify where we thought that would be implemented or, and, you know, potentially get an idea of how that's going to change things. Because I assume anyway, that means any plan development would have to create separate open space, dedicated open space. They couldn't count it as just the front yards or the backyard. So if that's the intent, that's all I wanted to confirm. And then similar on the, any new developments need to have a sewer connection, so no more septic systems. But that too also is more of a county policy than our town policy. Is that correct?
We already had that language in the development code.
You had that as part of it. Okay.
That new projects have to have that connection. Yeah, that was actually out of the general plan also.
Okay.
That's where it was derived from.
That's where it was derived. Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, I see that open space, one item on open space has to do, I guess, with the park, W Yumway Park. It talked about redesignating an address as open space. But then you do have some land uses along Donner Creek that are being, there's changes occurring to have them be consistent with other provisions. And then you do have revisions on the Section 18.46.050. I don't know if any of those address the Vice Mayor's questions, but I do see there's some small changes at least for open space. My questions were largely answered. I appreciate Laura that in terms of all these different definitions for different kinds of homeless housing, essentially, staff is saying, we're going to look at what the operation is and see where it fits with our definitions. We're not going to get hung up on labels that may just confuse the matter. Can you tell me, though, what is the difference now then between transitional housing and a transitional living center?
Yeah, we don't currently have a definition for a transitional living center. So, I mean, I pulled some language from just some California definitions for that type of use, which is generally, you know, a center that provides supportive services. So there's probably some crossover between the definitions that we have in the code and that. So we potentially could add a definition to add some clarity.
So, but sitting here right now, you just don't remember what a transitional living center might mean?
Yeah, I mean, it's similar to some of these other uses that we've talked about.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Okay. Those are all my questions. So now we'll turn to public comment. Do we have any public comment on the development code revisions adjusting to the general plan and then doing some cleanup? Okay, I'm not seeing anyone approaching the podium, so we'll bring it back to council for deliberation. I believe we started with Councilmember Henderson, so we'll go back to you again.
Thank you. I mean, I think I'm ready to move forward. Again, the presentation was wonderful, really efficient. The staff report explained everything incredibly well. And thanks to our Planning Commission, some of whom are here tonight, because you all have obviously seen this and made recommendations for council consideration. So thank you.
Yeah, I concur with Councilmember Henderson. I did appreciate staff, you know, looking to, instead of creating a new zoning that you went with general commercial for when we got rid of highway commercials. So I think very smart of you all to, let's look at what we already have. And appreciate the Plannings Commission deliberation already on this. So I'm happy to move forward.
Councilmember Klosdod.
No additional comments. I think it's all appropriate, and I'm ready to take action.
Okay. Likewise for me, I think the Planning Commission did the heavy lifting after the staff did the really heavy lifting. So I think there's, I'm ready for a motion as well. Who wants to take it?
I'll move that we have conducted our public hearing, introducing Ordinance 2025-10, approving development code amendments and the corresponding zoning map amendments to implement the 2040 general plan, adopt Resolution 2025-69, approving cleanup amendments to the general plan land use diagram, figure LU 2, determine the amendments to be exempt from SEQA under sections 1506 OC 2, 1506 OC 3, and 1506 1B 3 of the state SEQA guideline.
I will second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Passes unanimously. We can move on to item 7.2. This is permit tracking software selection. Jen, will you be leading the discussion?
I'm going to kick it off, and then we're going to have David Diamond from Air Diamond Consulting come up to the podium and do his presentation. So just one second, please. Okay. Sorry about that. Whoa. Pull this over so you can see it. While I'm doing that, we are very, very excited that we are at the point where we are ready to enter into an agreement. There's a few final negotiations going on with some contract language, but we are at a point where we're ready to enter into an agreement for the permit tracking software selection. And excited about the system that's been identified and what it's going to offer. I'm not going to steal the show from David. I'm going to let him have all the glory with that because he's done a great amount of work in getting us to this point. But I will say, with this system, we are still hearing and promise that we are, we will be live by May of '26. And that was one of the primary goals of the permit software system, was to be ready to go at the start of the next construction season. So David, I can drive for you if you'd like and take it away.
All right. Good evening, council. I'm just going to cover, we've been working on a lot of stuff, and I'm just going to cover the process that we've gone through for the permit tracking software here. So this is not a general update and all the stuff we've been doing. But we started around, I think it was back in June, with this expectations exercise. I talked about this last time I was addressing you here to determine what a staff expect and what applicants need from the software. We did two sessions there. We had four departments participating, 15, a little bit more than 15 participants. And we came up with more than 150 requirements for the software. So next slide, please, there. So from all that, what we were trying to do was we were trying to determine what was going to be the scope of the actual software vendor demonstrations that we got. What were we going to specifically ask? We certainly couldn't ask them to show us 150 different things. So we pared that down to around 20 things that we asked each vendor to show us in the live demo. Those 20 things were based on the software evaluation teams, what we felt was most critical. And we determined which vendors we were going to invite. Tyler, Exela, OpenGov, Civic Plus, and Cloud Permit. Interesting to note that we are a customer of Tyler. We are a customer of Exela. We are a customer of OpenGov. We are a customer of Civic Plus. We are not currently a customer of Cloud Permit. And the evaluators you can see there who were participating in that process. So thanks to all of them for participating in that. And then the demo sessions, what we did is we split them up. We had three basic types of demos that we were doing. The first was a technical demo. It was myself and two folks from IT, Brett and Chris. And the goal for that was to see how the systems would be configured and to make sure there were no security or management concerns that we had from this. We were fine with all of that, I think, you know, when we went through all that. The second session was the Demo Days. This was the big event. It was a public event that we advertised with a lot of people to come and see. And the recessions were all recorded. They were available online. This wasn't over two days. And this was where we were looking at those 20 evaluation team requirements to see how each system handled it and just general usability from the perspective of the people who would be using the system most. And then after we got through that, we went into planning and engineering specific demos. So the Demo Days was largely about building and how the building department would use this and how it works with their workflows. But we wanted to make sure that we weren't getting committed to systems that would not support planning and engineering requirements as well. So those were specific to those workflows there. And at the same time, we went out and got external input from a lot of different places. We sent the video links from those recordings to the Contractors Association, Truckee Fire, the PUD agencies, Town Staff, the five council members, our commissioners, and a bit more. CAT generously sent links out to their entire membership asking for input from people on what they thought. We did receive 11 pretty thoughtful comments back from CAT members. So thanks to those folks. I did a presentation for the Local Government Affairs Committee for CAT and did eight. And this is ongoing because I'm continuing to do these one-on-one contractor demos to show them the different systems. A lot of the contractors were familiar with Exela, so they didn't need to see that. But they were not familiar with specifically Cloud Permit and OpenGov, so I was showing those. And then I additionally did vendor customer interviews, 10 of those. So I contacted, I went out and figured out who was using what software systems and then contacted those customers to ask how it was going, what they thought of those systems, to get their candid responses for those. And the process for paring down the demos, after the technical demo, no vendors were cut. Civic Plus did self-eliminate themselves before we got into the technical demo. They determined that their system, based on our requirements, would not be suitable for us. So they withdrew from that before we got that far. And then when we did the Demo Days events, we did, based on the scoring from the evaluation team, we did omit Tyler from, it was pretty unanimous that that was the least favorite of the people who had seen the systems there. It was also going to be a pretty complex, expensive system. And then the next part of this was the pricing and time to launch estimates. This was arguably one of the most difficult parts of this process, with the exception of one vendor, because the other vendors did not want to commit to pricing and they did not want to commit to time to launch. But after having spoken to their customers, I got a good sense of what to expect. When I finally told them this was a deal breaker and we needed to have some estimates, we got them. And from that process, we eliminated Exela. It was going to be extremely expensive, extremely complex. And our team just honestly was not thrilled about the usability by comparison to OpenGov and to Cloud Permit. And when I talk about cost, we're talking about in excess of $100,000 a year more than where we landed. OpenGov was also more expensive, but not probably halfway between where we are going to be and where that would have been. And then after the planning and engineering specific demos, it got to the point where we thought OpenGov or Cloud Permit would do it for us, but there was a pretty strong preference for Cloud Permit. And it was also the lesser expensive system. And the company was really good for us to work with. So Cloud Permit was the selection here. It was preferred by planning, building, engineering, IT. The Contractors Association sent a very nice letter today in support of our decision to go with Cloud Permit, which we appreciate. And also the contractors, when I went out and did my one-on-ones, most of them had not seen it, a few had seen it before. And the enthusiasm was pretty strong for it. Part of the issue of Cloud Permit that people liked is it works on a phone. It's completely mobile-friendly. It's not where mobile accessibility is an add-on or an afterthought. It actually works natively perfectly well on a phone. And it offers Spanish language support, which was important for us. We didn't want to have a system that maybe later on, we could someday localize into another language. It was, we wanted to launch with this, and Cloud Permit offers that. And then the user interface and the user experience was just, it's a modern application. It's a modern framework. So it's what people expect from software today. It works very well. It's very, very fast. And everybody liked it. In addition, it was the lowest cost of ownership and the shortest time to launch. The, where it says here on the slide that no partners are required, by comparison with Exela, in addition to the cost of the license, Exela would require that we would pair up with one of their partners for implementation and for support because we were too small. because we were too small to deal with Exella directly. Nevada County pays $60,000 a year for their partner, and Placer pays $80,000 a year for their partner. So that was an additional on top of that whole thing. We just really didn't want to do it. We wanted something that was simpler, that was something that, that town staff could be trained to manage, that we could handle on our own without having to go out and do an RFP, or get a requisition for anything that we wanted to do to the system. These systems, you, you never launch them perfect the first time. You want to, over time and over years, improve them. And we wanted a system that was possible to do that with, as opposed to one that people got afraid to touch, because it was too expensive and too complicated. And with Cloud Permit, when I said that our, you know, our goal is May 2026, their response was, why so long? So they are very enthusiastic, or optimistic, I should say, that that won't be a problem for us to launch on May 26, for 2026. That will be the building module, most likely code enforcement as well. It will not be the planning module, and it will not be Public Works. We are getting those modules, but they will, will implement those after that. And our next steps on here is documentation. We are defining our permitting requirements now. We don't have that information currently, and, and it is something that we absolutely need to have as we're implementing the software. So we are working on that right now, and it's going pretty well. Thank you, Adelia, if you're listening. And then the migration plan from the current system to, to Cloud Permit, this is going to be pretty complex. Our IT team is working on that right now with the, the, the current software vendor that we've got, and that this is a pretty complex process in getting this information and making sure that it's mapped properly for the new system, so that when people use the new system, they will still have their legacy data there as well. As Jen mentioned, we're in the negotiation stage with the contract right now. Just before this meeting, I asked Town Attorney Boris if we had any concerns there. He had some concerns, but not that we think are insurmountable. And then the last part about this is the education. So about two months before we go live, IT and I are splitting off. They're going to focus on data migration, and I will focus on generating educational materials, both for town staff and for the public, so that by the time we get there, to the start of the building season, that we will have those materials ready, and everybody will be comfortable with the system. That's it.
Thank you, David. So we already did questions. Let's, are there any further questions of Mr. Diamond? We haven't done questions at all. I'm thinking of the last item. Let's do council questions, then. We'll start with Councilmember Romek.
I'll make it easy. Great presentation. No questions.
Councilmember Henderson.
No questions.
Vice Mayor.
I think I know the answer to this, but I'm assuming this does not have archive capability? We would still continue to use Laserfish for archiving? Is that correct?
That is correct. With this, we'll have an integration with Laserfish.
An integration. And so then that leads to my next question. Does that mean that the documentation that is exchanged, because I did enjoy a very nice demo from, from David Diamond, so all of that information, will that also be part of the preserved and transferred to Laserfish?
The public record, for public record purposes, yes.
Great. Phenomenal. That was important to me. Thank you.
Okay. What, if any, were the reservations about Cloud Permit? Were there any?
To be honest with you, the biggest reservation we had was, when we went into this, this was Exella's to lose, and they lost it. And the number of municipalities around us, Nevada County, Placer County, do use Exella. And so we, we were, we went in there assuming that they were going to come out on top with this. Sierra and Plumas Counties both use Cloud Permit, but we didn't have any other jurisdictions right around us that used Cloud Permit. One of the advantages of Cloud Permit is that there's only one account. So once somebody has an account, if, if a contractor, for example, is doing work in Sierra or Plumas, or the town of Truckee, the contractor logs in and sees all work at one point, which was a benefit. But other than that, it was not in widespread use. A lot of these systems are regional in their popularity, and Cloud Permit in the, in the Northeast is very popular, and in Canada it was popular, but it's starting to just move across the state, or the states. So we were a little bit hesitant about that. But then, and that's really why I went out and did all the one-on-one interviews with the contractors who knew Exella, because I wanted to know if they would accept something different. And it was virtually unanimous that they would accept it, and in fact, thought it was a good, a good system.
And did you get opinions from Sierra Community, Sierra County and Plumas County?
Yes, we did contact them as well, as, as well as Atwater, like a number of, of different Cloud Permit customers around in the, in, in the California area. And then, and also there were several in Colorado as well.
Okay, and they were all positive?
Cloud Permit customers were by far and away
Okay, thank you.
enthusiastic, yeah.
Thank you.
OpenGov customers were also enthusiastic. Worth saying.
All right, thank you. Any public comment? Mr. Vento.
He just said to me, be nice. We'll see how my voice holds up. I, first of all, I wanted to thank you, David, and all the staff members that worked on this, the general public. It was, I know he took painstaking details, because every time I walked into the CAT office, there was David in our conference room with the slides up, and it was nuts. So I just want everybody to realize that, you know, as the Executive Director of CAT, how much I appreciate the time that was taken by everybody to come out with this outcome. And it was an easy decision to make. I've never seen something just, I don't want to call it beat to death, but really, really looked at in, in detail. And so I appreciate the thoroughness. It's, it's, I think it's a good example of how we should probably look into things, work together, and, and enact stuff. So thank you very much, and thank you, Jen, as well for your leadership on this.
Thank you, Mr. Vento. Any other public comments? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council for deliberation. We can start with Councilmember Romek.
Yeah, thank you. And Ed, thank you for those comments, and David for the presentation. I think this is a great process, and across the board, involvement from so many community members and staff members to ensure that it meets all of our needs. So I'm in full support of moving forward.
Councilmember Henderson.
I'm also in support of moving forward, and thank you, everyone.
Vice Mayor Klosestod.
Yeah, I really want to highlight the importance of the Spanish, making this accessible to our Spanish speakers. That was a huge bonus for me, to see that, and to see this so mobily accessible, because I think that, too, is really critical for the functionality and the way we work these days. Really important. And thank you again for your time and attention in, in doing the demo with me. I was particularly, I don't know if anybody else here on the dais has seen David's spreadsheet on the process of the different permits, and, and if this, then that, process that he has created, it's, it's extraordinary. And to now understand the complexity that we were trying to solve with basically a uni, universal application, this system has the opportunity and the, and the potential to drastically transform the permit process for both our staff and all the customers. And I am so excited about this. And it is only because David was so tenacious in making sure that we understood what the complexity of the problem was that we were trying to solve before we chose a solution. And I really want to commend him for that, and commend staff for their time and dedication, because I know it has been many, many hours with David, and to, to, to be committed to that process, and, and ultimately what I think is going to be a very successful transition. So, thank you all.
I agree with the, my colleagues up here in the dais especially appreciate the Vice Mayor's description of her experience with the process of preparing it. And, I don't know, we'll add Dave to the list of people that qualify for incentive awards, something like that. The, do we have a motion?
I will make a motion that we authorize the town manager to execute a three-year contract with Cloud Permit for permit tracking software in the amount of $158,475, plus a 15% contingency, for a total not to exceed amount of $182,246.
And I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. It passes unanimously. We can now move on to item 7.3. Okay.
So, Mayor, well, our building official is headed up this way for item 7.3. Mike, that's your cue. I did just want to take a moment and say that I think it's become incredibly apparent throughout this process. Had we not had a consultant, and more specifically David, supporting this effort, there is not the staff capacity to have gone through this process and to do the level of detail without dropping a bunch of other items off of the work plan. And David really has come into our team as an organization. He's, I think he probably has a badge at this point. If not, we should get him one, and has been a great, I think, inspiration at the staff level as well, and just really good source of encouragement. I think we've been able to learn from him. I think he's learned a lot in terms of our process. But without you authorizing his contract and that support, we would not be here, and it would probably be a couple of years off. So, David, thank you.
Okay, it looks like Mike's almost ready to start on item 7.3. Updated building code.
Well, as usual, good evening, Your Honorable Mayor, members of the town council. With respect to this next agenda item, we are looking at the adopting, the adoption of the 2025 California Building Code of Regulations. Want to go ahead and put a quick pause on this, and put a little bit of a reminder on what we talked about two weeks on the introduction process. For those who were not here or did not see it, this is usually a fairly simple process, excuse me, fairly simple process that is done every three years, where the state will receive versions of the international code, in this case, the 2024 International Building Residential, the most current national electric code, to just list a few of them. They comb through these codes, and will modify or tailor them to the needs of the state of California. This being said, the one, the bullet point that I talked about on the introduction was a little bit of a hitch at the last minute with the SB 130. It wouldn't really have any impact on us here, but for the best interest of the public, SB 130 was putting a lock on any modifications to the code if it wasn't done by October 15th. This period right now has been set for at least two code cycles. What this means for the public is that anything we have in place, or have had in place on the prior code adoption, is, is and can be maintained. We just can't make any modifications to that. That being said, does council have any questions in regards to the adoption of the 2025 California Building Code of Regulations? If not, then I would move back
I'm sorry, we're, there are some questions. Lisa, I have a question.
Gotcha.
Councilmember Henderson, do you have any questions?
Why don't you start, or?
Okay.
Before you ask your question, I have one quick note. We noticed just today that there was an editing glitch in the draft ordinance, because it was built on a previous iteration of it. So in section one of the ordinance where it says that there's an exhibit, there's not an exhibit. The exceptions and local amendments to the codes are simply the ones that are already in Title 15. There are not any new ones. There is no exhibit. We have revised language for that portion of the ordinance.
When we get to the recommendation, well, we need to change the wording of that.
If the council's so inclined, you could make a motion to approve the ordinance with amendments to that section. You don't have to read them in detail.
Okay. My question actually goes back to the last proceeding. You had provided an exhibit where a state document that covered all the changes, summarized all the different changes in the building code. I don't know if you look through it and can tell us, are there any particular changes that are going to have an exceptional effect on the town of Truckee?
Yeah, there, there was a light discussion on this. Historically speaking, as long as I've been a building official, what I've seen a big push on is energy. Because the state has taken a tiered process on getting into a more restrictive requirement on saving our, our natural, our energy, that has adverse effects, usually with our electrical code and green building. As of right now, I do not foresee anything major. There are some structural designs. I'm not a professional engineer, but I, I am aware that there are some structural designs. I don't find that there would be any significant impacts from a financial aspect. We should be pretty well in a sane spot. Like anything else, I would expect that there might be some light increases, but nothing significant that will be impacting that.
Okay. Thank you very much. Councilmember Romek, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Vice Mayor Klosestod, and Councilmember Henderson, you have, okay, those are all the questions. Are there any public comments on the revised building code? I don't see anyone approaching the podium, so we'll bring it back to council for deliberation. Let's start again with Councilmember Henderson.
Ready to make a motion.
Okay.
Okay.
Proceed.
I move that we adopt ordinance, adopt the ordinance amending, actually, let me just read it here, that we have conducted a public hearing and adopt ordinance 202509, amending Title 15 of the Truckee Municipal Code, adopting by reference the 2025 edition of California Building Code of Regulations with certain additions, versions, and
And with perhaps the addition, the change of the language in section one, I have to say, the town council hereby adopts the following code, subject to the changes and modifications set forth in Title 15 of the Truckee Municipal Code.
So stated. Thank you, sir.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Ross.
Thank you, council. Have a great night. Happy holidays to everyone.
Yeah, you too. And now we'll go on to item 7.4. This is the work plan and priorities.
We appear to be frozen, so I might just need a moment.
Okay.
And some of our IT magicians to come up.
Do you want to take a break, or?
So, well, Chris is doing his magic. I'll do a little bit of an intro. First, thanks for being here tonight. I know we usually cancel the meeting this week, but we were excited that the Planning Commission had advanced the general plan updates, and really wanted to get that forward without too much time lapsing. And then the work plan update tonight, so we moved that to this meeting, so you'd have a little bit more time with it. The work plan update will not be quite as concise, but it's got a lot of great information in there, and I'm hoping that you can really celebrate everything that your policies have enacted and the work that's been done. It looks very different this year than it has in previous years. In the past, we've kind of just listed through everything that's been completed, started, or delayed. We're doing a much higher level summary of that, because there's a lot of detail in the work plan. So if you want to ask specific questions, please do so. We just don't have those in the slides. It's in the council presentation folder. And then, it should be Title 4.
Right here? Yep.
We are also going to focus, in this two-year cycle, in the work plan updates, to give you a much more descriptive update on some highlight projects that are happening, both in and out of the work plan. So you have two this evening. Alfred's really going to spend some time in update on the railroad pedestrian crossing. And then we'll talk a little bit about our Uni EV charging plan. And these are opportunities, A, to just get some more transparency, and other opportunity for the public to be aware of what's happening and our progress, but also for the public to be aware of what's happening and our progress, but also if you find that maybe we aren't meeting what your expectations were when we ventured out on these projects, or maybe your expectations have changed, it's a great chance to bring that up. Depending on the level of conversation, we can agendize it for a specific conversation, or if it's something, you know, fairly minor, we can have that conversation tonight as well. So Chris did his magic. Thank you so much. I'm going to switch seats. And just get comfortable while we go through this. It is quite long, and since it's a little early, I think I'm going to show a video and do a couple little things so you can see some of the great work that's happened this last quarter. Always like to just start with the reminder of the work plan. It's really setting those clear expectations for council, the community, I should add staff in here, that's number two, on the work that we're doing and the direction that we're headed. There's lots of energy and enthusiasm around a lot of topics. We've got a lot of things going on, but there's always an interest in adding new items. We really respect that, and it's exciting for us as well, but we just can't do everything. So we have the bike rack as kind of the holding space. And then overall, just the sheer representation of the amount of work that's happening in the town. We have tried this year to evolve and include a little bit more context into ongoing work commitments that we're doing outside of course services. There's certainly some overlap, so I think we should acknowledge that, but there's a pretty significant chunk of hours that is just spent on that, on ongoing engagement. And we're trying to give you and the community that context as you're reviewing this. So some headline accomplishments for this quarter. The IDE Action Plan, IDEA Action Plan, that was unanimously adopted, that is certainly moving forward the council's priority and the town's interest in accessibility and inclusion for all of our community members. So we are very excited to have that as our roadmap going forward. We've had some major wildfire mitigation projects that have been completed, improving our resiliency, the adoption of the housing equity framework, and then, of course, our river revitalization, R3 playbook adoption. On the enhancing emergency preparedness and recovery side, quarter one progress, townwide evacuation assessment, it's about 15% complete. We have interviewed consultants at this point. They had issued an RFP, so that will be coming forward to the Town Council for approval soon. Implemented BOX as an organization from a data resiliency perspective and still in that process. Completion of the roadway vegetation management program down at West End as well as Tahoe Donner, and then the defensible space ordinance on hold. The highlight of the story really this quarter is protecting our community through proactive wildfire mitigation. Leading in environmental sustainability, greener community, reducing waste and changing habits. A lot of great success in things moving forward in this area, but I really would like to highlight that we have full compliance with all of the businesses on the single-use water bottle ordinance. So that's an exciting update. As far as water filling stations, the Truckee Mountain Filtered website has launched. I'm going to click on that in a moment so you can see that. I think I also left you all on your dais, but we have a new pamphlet that's out that shows all the filling stations in town. We have some available for the public as well. We added 20 new water bottle filling stations since summer, and there's 43 access points on the map. The filling stations are available for free to the community to use for events, and the website is really fun. There's a new logo, and you can get all the information on here in terms of where to go to fill up, where these stations are, not only in Truckee but over at the lake as well. So that is truckiemountainfilter.org if you're interested in exploring that site. And then repeated that we funded the 20 new water bottle filling stations. We are working on the solid waste franchise agreement. We're out in solicitation for the consultants and understanding what that timeline looks like a little bit more in terms of community surveying and moving towards the heat pump incentive program, which will be back to you in early 2026. Revitalizing our community core, this is where a lot of celebration around the R3 playbook occurred this last quarter. We have a very clear roadmap for the future of the river corridor and are working with our catalyst sites to move those forward and learn from those as they move forward. We had a great ribbon cutting that Mayor, Vice Mayor Clovstad attended for the River Sports Park Trail Connection. Our police radio upgrades are complete, and we have some of those radios that we may end up being able to donate over to Sierra County that are old ones that don't meet our needs but might meet theirs. So we're working with them so that we're not wasting those. Some good progress on the mobility hub. And of course, perhaps the highlight on this page is the ribbon cutting and opening of Dalbe Umowé Park. And this is where I am going to, as long as we're early, if you bear with me, I'm going to show you a video of the opening because it was a really fun community event. Welcome to Dalbe Umowé Park. This park is more than just land by the river. It's a connection to our community. It has a bridge, literally and figuratively, connecting the park and our trails, our downtown, our neighborhoods.
Miuma Anguamibi, welcome. This is an honor to be here today to talk about Dalbe Umowé Park and the Washington name for this place. This is a cool partnership with the town of Truckee. Thank you to the town, thank you to the Truckee Donner Land Trust for creating the opportunity to bring our language back to place. The Dalbe Umowé Park has been a collaborative effort within the tribe from our oldest elders to our youngest youth to identify a name that would be meaningful and that would represent this place and our history here. The name itself means water running out and away. So when we talk about Dalbe Umowé, we're talking about the Truckee River going down and one of the place names along the Truckee. So it's a really cool next step in our partnership with the tribe, returning something that's old to this place, but also envisioning a better future for us all.
When we set out to buy Truckee Springs to protect it as open space, we knew we needed to partner with the town of Truckee, working here in the heart of our community. And so we had a volunteer committee that included councilmember Clovstad and former Town Manager Tony Lashbrook. And the community really came together to fundraise to not only buy the open space across the river Truckee Springs, but also to help fund the pedestrian bridge that connects the two parts together.
We at the town are just so excited and honored to bring this place, this park and this land to the community as a space to gather, connect, celebrate, and just enjoy the river and our downtown and our trial system. The park has some great opportunities. You can come down here, have lunch. You can sit and look at the great new sculptures and art that's in here. Just enjoy the peacefulness of the river. The river really is core to our community. It's part of our character, and it connects all of us, and the park celebrates that.
We're really grateful to work with the town on this and future projects, and really look forward to the public getting out here and enjoying these beautiful spaces.
Okay. Onto enhancing communication and public outreach. So much great success this quarter to celebrate in this area, really fostering that inclusive and transparent community that we've been striving for. Adoption of the IDEA Action Plan that I spoke to earlier. We have our new public records software, and I think Kelly gave a presentation that launched in May, so there's a little bit of overlap. But from May until the end of this quarter, September, we've had 384 requests. That's more than two every day, so not even business days. So it's really interesting. You can go on there, you can see what all the requests are. Most of them are relatively simple, related to building permits, and some are much more time-intensive, but this has been a great way for us to track that and get some more transparency around that. We now have a Spanish-specific newsletter. Andrea and Braun and the comms team have done a great job. We have a better deadline now for our newsletters. Articles are due on the 20th. We're publishing both the Spanish and the English version at the same time on the first of the month, so that's working out really well. We have 51 subscribers to that newsletter and a 69% open rate, so really want to celebrate that. We also have launched the WhatsApp app. It's a bilingual app. Andrea is managing that, and so far, we have 81 members subscribing to that. That's some great outreach and connection with the community and is showing the trust that we're building in that community and the ability to communicate. And then, of course, we've spoken about this a lot tonight, but couldn't help but highlight again the community block party, and it was just great to have the whole community come together in a really fun celebratory way. For workforce housing, building equitable housing solutions within our community, adopted the housing equity framework. We're advancing through the seventh cycle of the housing element, or the eighth cycle, I'm sorry, housing element update. We have the unhoused solutions with T.HAC, and we're going to talk a little bit more about that in a minute. And then our homegrown housing and density bonus program. Those are two different programs, but they're married in many ways. You're going to hear an update in January on that, at least on the financial feasibility update. The Planning Commission heard the development code proposed draft changes. It's very intense, and they didn't quite get through everything, so they're going to revisit that again in January, but we may be able to give you some updates and feedback as to their conversation as well, so early 2026 on that program. Now I'm going to pass it over to Alfred, and this is the more in-depth conversation on the railroad pedestrian crossing study.
There you go. Good evening, Your Honor. Members of Town Council, Alfred Knotts. I'm the Assistant Public Works Director with the town of Truckee, here to give you a little more in-depth update on a key infrastructure project. Do want to highlight that this is a study, so I will highlight that throughout this process, just so people understand where we are in the process, which is at the very, 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 very initial planning stages. With that note, this is a graphic, actually, I've used on a lot of projects. It's served me very well to reiterate that we are at the very, very beginning of this project and study phase. So this is to look at the overall project development process and also to highlight, typically, you know, transportation projects of this caliber, this size, or scope, or scale, do tend to take about five to seven to 10 years, so just to keep that in mind as we walk through this. Project overview. So the project overview, I'm not sure why this slide got all screwy there, but it is to evaluate alternatives for future railroad crossing, providing accessibility and connectivity for pedestrians and bicyclists in central downtown Truckee. Potential alternatives include an overcrossing and undercrossing, and we do want to highlight that through this evaluation process and analysis, an at-grade crossing was identified. However, it has been determined to be, at least through the screening process, infeasible in terms of regulatory constraints and also right-of-way constraints. So recognizing that, the study evaluate alternatives for a new railroad crossing that is intended to improve pedestrian bicycle access, maintain and improve pedestrian and bicycle circulation with or without a train present in downtown, improve access for residents and visitors on both sides of downtown and community features like parks and the Truckee River, and protect the historic character and buildings of downtown Truckee. So the train has always been an asset and a positive aspect. It can also, it's not really conducive to walkability through a downtown. So in looking at that, we did look at, these are kind of the study limits because we did want to make sure that the public and council and also our community review committee, which I'll get into a little bit, did understand that we are looking between Bridge Street and a MacGyver crossing. There is an identified potential crossing, future crossing on the East River in our master plans and in other guidance documents, but this is focused on the western portion from Bridge Street to MacGyver. So we did look at this also because we want to look at cost-benefit analysis, you know, what are we really looking to achieve here? What does it take really to walk an able-bodied, high-altitude person to make it from West River over to Donner Pass Road and the Commercial Road and back and forth? Recognizing that we have significant investments in attractions on both sides of those corridors. So looking at pedestrian, it takes about 11 minutes to get along to that area. Going to the east, coming to the west, if going towards MacGyver, it takes about 16 minutes. Bicyclists, about two, and to the west, about four. So we did look at the potential crossing locations. When we looked at these identified potential or candidate crossing locations, we looked at criteria such as safe, being safe and accessible, aligned with downtown pedestrian bicycle circulation, recognizing that, again, we just heard about the park, but identifying the park and the bridge over there as well on the north side for Donner Pass Road, looking as far over to the trout tree, trail connection as well. Minimal impact to existing structures and environment, so we don't want this to be a detriment, it'll be more of a compliment. Provides connections to downtown Truckee to Recreational Areas Trail and Donner Pass Road and West River, which we've discussed. So we did identify six initial locations. I won't walk through all of these, but the ones that we ended up carrying forward were A, B, and C at the top, which are actually further to the west there. And you see that dash line still there? That is that midpoint that we just looked at where those crossing distances essentially would start from. So as you get closer to the east and further on down to Bridge Street, you know, the utility of it, the cost-benefit kind of goes out the window. So we did focus on locations A, B, and C. So those coming from the west are essentially down by where Jack and Emma are, that building, and then looking in between those two buildings, in between drink, coffee, and do stuff for location B, and then location C is just a little further to the east. Actually, that, sorry, that's down by drink, coffee, do stuff, and then looking at those areas in between. The at-grade crossing, so most people are familiar with at-grade crossing, so those are just, you know, not at, below, or above grade, just straight across. And again, we do have those existing at Bridge Street, and we do have a below grade when you get down to MacGyver. But there are constraints with there with that type of crossing, based on constraints from UPS not really allowing additional crossings unless existing crossings are removed or mitigated. So really, no net gain is what UP tries to achieve when they look at crossings across their facility. An overpassing, an overpass, sorry, allows pedestrians and bicyclists to travel over the tracks. It must clear span the entire right-of-way of the railroad, provided 23 feet and 4-inch clearance over the tracks, so that's a double stack of a train to get under there. So they did look at all these existing criteria to make sure that any potential improvement in the future does not impact, obviously, freight and passenger rail. Requires ramp, steps, or elevators access on each side, and the ramps were really quickly eliminated by the CRC, which is a community review committee, due to the mass and length of those. So on each side, the ramps themselves, to meet ADA standards, equated to about 400 to 500 feet on each side, so it came out to be about 2/10 of a mile just in the ramp Underpasses, a little harder to visualize, but allows pedestrians and bicyclists to travel under the tracks. Access may be outside, must be outside the fence railroad line, right-of-way. Typically, needs about eight feet of structure depth to support the tracks, and so you're going down a significant depth. Also, each one of these, UP will require that the tracks remain active during this whole time, so that's something to consider on each of these as well. Involves excavation under the tracks and extensive coordination with the railroad to keep that open. Requires ramp, steps, or elevators access on each side also. And I believe that's pretty much the rundown on the underpass. A summary of the technical advisory committee and community review committee input. And I did want to preface this, that there is a more detailed presentation that was provided in the packet, so I'm sorry I didn't highlight that to begin with. An at-grade crossing was not carried forward for further consideration. Overhead crossing with elevator versus ramp scored the best overall. Location A, that was the furthest to the west. That did also score the highest as well from the community review committee. It had minimal impacts to parking, to adjacent businesses. Location B was also scored similar to A, but a little bit less due to its potential impacts to parking close to the building. Location C, which was further to the east, was highlighted by committee members due to its closer proximity to the depot. The thing with location C, again, this is all feasibility as of right now, but close proximity to those buildings does pose some potential issues due to vibration and excavation and foundations and shoring and bracing. And again, a lot of these constructibility issues would be further vetted on down the road as you get into more advanced planning. I did want to highlight, and I did receive an email before the meeting from Ralph Gordon also, and he wanted me to highlight that he is a very, very big fan of the hop-on, hop-off trolley, as am I, but that is not mutually exclusive from this project. That is identified in our short-range transit plan and also identified in our parking plan, so I don't want anyone to get hung up that that precludes that from ever happening. Overhead examples, so obviously scenic and visual impacts are at the forefront of- Overhead examples, so obviously scenic and visual impacts are at the forefront of, of, of most of our minds, including the Community Review Committee. So we did want to highlight some examples about what this might look like, looking at other communities. Something that was highlighted for the committee also was looking at more of a glass structure so that it does have more of this transparency. But also, we did hear that from our safety folks and our PD folks that they would be more preference of a, of a glass type of structure if it was above grade as well. So we did want to highlight, you know, what some of these could potentially look like. And these are other examples that we did carry forward. The one on the right is something I'm familiar with and did bring back this example. That's a mine shaft that is in Park City to mimic kind of the historic character also. So things can be developed that kind of can match the character of a community as well. So recognizing that, we didn't really do any visuals on a tunnel because I think we all can visualize what a tunnel looks like, it's below the ground. But we did want to take some additional effort, we did have some additional budget, and we were able to put that towards more advanced planning studies in terms of the visualization and the renderings. So we did take a look at some of these about what they would look like from various aspects of the downtown core. So this is from Donner Pass Road, this is a very aerial type of perspective. As you can see from the train underneath there, that is a double-stack train, so to get that clearance. This is from at-grade, yes, it is a very significant structure. Again, this is information we wanted to be able to, to further vet through this type of a process to better inform on the outcomes of the study. This is actually from West River, so this is what you would see coming kind of over by flyers going eastbound, or westbound. And we did want to take a quick look also at a rough order of magnitude costs. And the firm we did hire does do, they have hundreds of contracts with both Amtrak, with UP, Burlington Northern. They're very, very well informed in this area and did have more recent construction costs that we did want to kind of take a look at, you know, what exactly are we looking at? We're not necessarily looking at the engineering, constructibility, feasibility, you know, what is the political feasibility, what is the financial feasibility of this type of a study and future projects should it proceed to any additional planning or analysis.
Okay, for our second project update, this is just one slide, but this is our municipal EV transition plan that we've been working on. We've had a consultant developing a plan that's going to come back to you in early 2026. But this is just reiterating what the assumptions were that went into that plan. So if you have any different expectation, it would be important to hear that now or ask that we have a, a conversation sooner rather than later about those. We're phasing in to meet CARB standards, fully electrified fleet plus some employee EV charging. It is not all of the charging, not all the parking spaces would have charging stations. So just the number to meet what our fleet needs are as well as some employee EV charging. And then just highlighting that heavy-duty snow equipment is really challenging. The technology is not available there at the moment. There's also a pretty interesting graph that was in the staff report as well as here kind of showing the Phase One, Two, and Three approach and the different classes of vehicles and what we're assuming in that master plan. You also have a couple of decision points tonight that were highlighted in the staff report. We've received a request to support a grant application and potentially grant work for a managed river access and floodplain restoration plan. This came from Truckee River Legacy Foundation. The grant itself and what's being proposed for the application is very much in alignment with the R3 playbook and the goals of the R3 playbook. But if this is not something that's incorporated in the work plan. The initial application for the grant, I think Truckee River Legacy Foundation has indicated that they're willing to take the lead on that and do the majority of the lift. So it may, that may be as simple as a letter of support or a signature on the grant application saying that it matches the town's goals and visions. What we're unclear of, and probably to some degree the Truckee River Legacy Foundation, is if we're awarded the grant, what does that workload look like? And we just can't predict that now. So we certainly are seeking some council discretion or direction on that. And it would be helpful if you want to move this forward to maybe give us a sense of timeframe. You're okay with us spending on that, and then we could do a check-in if we reach that point. I put up here an example of 15 hours, it could be anything, something minimal, 10 to 15 hours is not going to impact the work plans, so there would be no trade-off right now. Again, I think the trade-offs really would come if the grant is received and then what that workload looks like, and we could report back to that, to you on that later. The second decision point, I'm calling it, I'm not sure, there's a lot of decision, it's really awareness. As T-HAC, the Truckee Tahoe Homeless Action Coalition is advancing, we've made a lot of great progress, you've heard that update, you had a great joint meeting where you're a funding partner in the pilot project, we've identified a site. The negotiations for that site are still underway, so we do not know if we have site security at this point, which also means that, of course, we're delayed with starting to look at TI's contract with Volunteers of America. Those blocks are in place should the site be secured, but that negotiation is taking a little bit longer. As we move through and hopefully are able to advance the navigation center, there's a couple of different paths. One is that there's already discussions about what does a year or two look like? That could look very different depending on the success of the pilot. If the location, if we secure that location down by Deer, on Deerfield and it's successful there, a plan around a year or two would maybe center around that location. If it's not successful there or the model itself doesn't work, then we're almost back to the drawing board on what does that look like and a different level of intensity from staff support. So we really are raising this to acknowledge there's supporting the neighborhood and community outreach efforts, which varies from day to day and depending on how things are going to go with the pilot, how the community's responding, how the pilot's working, that, that will vary drastically, I think we should expect that. If the site does not get secure via this negotiation, we are back to the drawing board of looking for a different site and would just have to accept that we are not going to have a navigation center for this winter. There's weekly pilot coordination team meetings. Currently, the mayor, chief of police, and myself are involved in those meetings. I think moving forward, it would likely be the chief and I and probably less involvement from the mayor if the navigation center as proposed moves forward. But it is a, more of a time-intensive process than I think we originally visioned when we just said support T-HAC in the work plan. So wanted to be very transparent about that. And if there are parameters that you would like to put around our time that's allocated to this, it would be great to know. If there's anything specific you would like in the work plan in terms of spelling out the tasks more individually, we can do that. If you're happy keeping it fairly broad like it currently is and just having these check-ins each quarter or in between, if needed, we can do that as well. A couple other highlights in the staff report and the attachments. We have a lot of progress on some organizational health and systems improvements. So our NeoGov applicant tracking system is 95% complete. We've had two recruitments go, three recruitments go out on that, two have closed, and we are already seeing there's a great reach with this tool. We've had, I think, 120 applications for our business analyst and almost 80 for emergency services coordinator position, and all across the country, and very qualified applicants as well. So we're already seeing really great advantages from that. We are working on our AI policies. We're thankful the council supported so many new positions, and so we took full advantage of that and are well within, well on the road of filling those positions. They have created a lot of backfilling because we have so many great town employees that have filled several of them that we maybe weren't necessarily planning for at the time, but it's a great problem to have, and so we've had a few more add-on to the list. We have completed all the reclassification studies and are implementing some of our GASP requirements and FLSA audit requirements as well. So with that, these are the two specific items we'd like. If you have any direction other than what's being proposed, if you have any questions on the railroad crossing feasibility study, if you have any thoughts on the EV charging master plan update, and then also just general feedback, there's no motion needed tonight, but general feedback. If the new format is working, if you prefer the old format in terms of presentation, that would be helpful as well. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Jen. Start questioning with Councilmember Romek.
Thank you. Erin, I have a question related to the water bottle compliance. Maybe as you're walking up, Jen, I'll ask you a question. On the T-HAC, I know we had Chana Doherty with Agnew Beck was part of the T-HAC and helped, I think, with some of the original outreach. Are they still on board to support outreach efforts on that, or would that be more on our town staff?
Yeah, so Agnew Beck's done a great job, and they've been a great resource for us. Their contract was limited in both scope and cost. So I think they have about $25,000 left and are being judicious with that as we hopefully move through the navigation and how they support that. So there's more than just the outreach efforts on that side, and then also like the year-two planning, and are they part of that? So I think we expect, should the navigation center move forward at that site, that there, we might be asked to provide more support and more ongoing engagement. It makes sense also since we're probably the first point of contact for any of the community down there that's, has concerns or has questions or is experiencing challenges. They're going to call PD, they're going to call the town. So we don't know how to predict what that looks like, but expect it to be more than we originally thought.
Great, thank you, and thank you, Erin. Jen highlighted that it's, there's full business compliance with the single-use plastic water bottle ban. I was just kind of curious what sort of staff efforts it took to get there, and then what ongoing staff efforts do you see happening to ensure that continues?
Sure, so to clarify, there's a bit more detail in the full work plan update. That compliance rate, I do want to, you know, small disclaimer, it is, that's 100% compliances, compliance among businesses we knew to be selling water bottles ahead of ordinance implementation. We were lucky to have some fantastic student volunteers that helped us do a pretty comprehensive survey of businesses to determine before the ordinance went into effect if they were selling any kind of bottled beverage, and if so, if they were selling the types of water bottles that would be prohibited under the ordinance. And then we did have staff recheck all of the businesses that had been selling water bottles prior to ordinance implementation to verify compliance afterwards. And so that was quite a significant endeavor by staff. There, you know, we have since that time received one or two reports of businesses we, business types we wouldn't have anticipated having water bottles. Usually it's like they, they're giving them away at no cost to visitors and guests and things like that. We are, at this point, shifting to a complaint-based enforcement system, which is what we use for most of our ordinances. So we think that we will need substantially less staff time to kind of monitor that on an ongoing basis. I don't have an exact count of hours, but it was a big lift by our staff, so I'm very grateful for their efforts there.
Great, well, thank you for your team's efforts. I think that is it for now.
Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you. I noticed the defensible space ordinance is on hold. Just any expectation of moving forward or what that timing?
Yeah, James is making his way to the podium. He has been our staff liaison with Truckee Fire on, on that.
Good evening, council. Yeah, so for the defensible space ordinance, we've been discussing with the Truckee Fire Protection District, and one of the big issues with this is kind of the ambiguity at the state-level regulations. So the regulation's essentially been there through state law, but what that regulation looks like still needs to be ultimately decided by the state fire marshal, and that's working its way through the process. And I, I believe, not to speak on their behalf, but my understanding is that these changes could really impact what the proposed language for the local defensible space ordinance looks like and what the enforceability of it might be. So that's one of the reasons why they put on pause.
Waiting on the state, all right. While you're up there, you might want to stay up there. What do we have planned for wildfire mitigation projects for 2026?
For this fiscal year?
As we actually move into, yeah.
So a big part, one, if you're talking about fiscal year, I would say a big portion of our mitigation related to wildfires is going to be focused on evacuations. And so we're currently in the middle of going through an RFP for hiring a consultant to come in and do a comprehensive evacuation study. Our hope is that a lot of that work leads into a strong prioritized list, which will very likely include capital projects, will likely also include hazardous weight, or hazardous vegetation removal. And so that will likely be a huge building block to set those projects up. In the short term, I believe that there is some roadside vegetation management planned by our Public Works Department, and so that would be ongoing as well.
I'll just add on to that a little bit. One of the lessons that we learned with the West End Beach roadside vegetation management, and I think you probably saw in the update, that of the 70 property owners down there two partnered with us and Truckee Fire on doing vegetation removal on their private property to help expand the cleanup a little bit more. And those were the homeowners association and the Park and Rec District. So the two largest property owners, granted. There was a private property owner that was interested but actually didn't end up having any work that needed to be done on their property. And then the rest of the property owners were not interested in, in having work done on their private property. And the reason I bring that up is I think it's important to maybe learn some lessons from that about how much more education and awareness needs to happen in terms of the benefits of vegetation removal from a resiliency perspective. And then also, as we are headed into the budget cycle, if you recall, in the last budget adoption, we added vegetation removal projects each year, similar to your paving projects. And so as we're looking into different areas, and Becky, please jump in if I'm misspeaking, there was a lot of interest in the last budget to expand down, Donner Pass Road by the lake. The more research we've done, there's actually not a lot of work, if any, that we can do in the right-of-way down there. It would be on private property. So we need to understand from Truckee Fire their capacity to partner again with us on that if that was something we wanted to look into or what other areas in town. But there is the intention to have a project in the next budget. Quite sure what that looks like at this point, learning from the West End project.
And just because I know we had talked about how there were only two property owners that actually participated in sort of this pilot program this year, which doesn't sound like a lot, but they are the largest landowners, so how much acreage do we have a sense that we worked with those two property owners on?
Do you know what it was, Scott? We can pull it up for you.
Scott, we'll pull that up.
And just, just in terms of what we have in our work plan right now and the budget, what we have is a 2027 roadside vegetation management project. And then there's this outstanding grant that we've been working with Nevada County on. If they are able to move forward, then we'll partner with them on that. But we're still waiting to hear, it's a FEMA grant. So we can always use our Public Works Roads crew to do some brushing and chipping, but we don't have a contracted project plan until 2027.
On the workforce housing update, how many workforce housing units did we actually add in town this year, both through any new construction or programs like our deed restriction program?
We might have to get you that number, I don't, that's going to take a little bit of time to pull that one up.
That's fine, I would love that number as follow-up. I think it's just critical as we think about, like, we have really good policy intentions, are we actually achieving the outcomes we're trying to achieve? This is not exactly a question, but I'm going to say it now because it's something that I just want us to be, like, I would ask that we think about this sort of broadly. So Alfred, when you were talking about the transportation project, which just, thank you for the overview, and I know we're very, very early in it. Just this concept that things have to take a really long time, five, seven, 10 years. I, I kind of want to challenge all of us in our entire community to, to really challenge that status quo and say just because it's always taken that long doesn't mean we have to accept sort of yesterday's conditions as, as today and as we move forward. And I'll just sort of say that, you know, as a nation, we can't get big things built anymore. We really, really struggle, and part of that is, you know, there's so many agencies involved, so many regulatory processes, so many requirements, so many hurdles. And as a local jurisdiction, we obviously can't impact all of those. We can't change what UP's requirements are, things like that. But I think we do sort of, as a town, have to really think through what our part is to solve pieces of those. to solve pieces of those types of puzzles, sort of if and where we can, right? The San Francisco Oakland Bay Bridge took three years to build. The Empire State Building took 13 months to build, right? We don't get big things built for our constituents anymore. And so thinking through where are the regulatory bottlenecks, where are the processes that can actually shift? Again, Truckee's not going to change all of those things when it comes to an infrastructure project like this, but I'll bet there are pieces where we would identify bottlenecks and say, hey, we could shift this. So it's sort of a challenge, kind of a question. Okay, AI policy, I wanted to sort of understand a little bit more color around that and sort of what we intend with that. And I'm asking just because, just this past weekend, when I was at this very intensive fellowship weekend, we talked quite a bit about AI and how local jurisdictions, it's really challenging to craft local AI policies. There's sort of risk in doing that. And a lot of, you know, council members and mayors from all of these other jurisdictions we're talking about really don't create from scratch, right? Use existing frameworks, use state-level guidance, use policies from the International City Council Management Association. So I would just love a little more color on what we're attempting to do with that.
Yeah, so Chris Hardy, Chief Information Officer. I would just start by thanking Jen because she sent a committee of us to ICMA to an AI-specific conference very early on last year. And we got a lot of really good guidance, I think, ahead of many other municipalities. So we, as a core team, kind of met and a lot of the advice that came out of that conference and a lot of really good links to existing policies were kind of compiled into one effort. And we brought that kind of in front of the department ed team. I think at this point, it's getting reviewed now. I think just in a context, like for AI as a whole, there's so many different models right now. And what we're most concerned with is just kind of unifying and where we can pointing town staff to use one specific model that we can harden and make sure that, you know, LLM is not exposing our data to residents. And then on the other side of that, we did a training recently here around two weeks, or sorry, two months ago, requiring all town staff to take a 15-minute training on AI. The one thing that I've seen the biggest uptick in is the want and need for chatbots. And as CIO, one of my concerns is resident confusion. So having a chatbot, say, for one program and then residents thinking they can use it for others. So those are some of the things that we're trying to outline in the policy and one of the reasons why it's good to have that foundation there.
So it sounds like we're not creating totally from scratch. We're using some existing frameworks and contextualizing it for our local conditions.
That's correct.
Perfect, thank you for that. I really appreciate that. Okay, my last question, I promise, is we have so many great metrics in all of this in the quarterly updates that we get. And we have our greenhouse gas emissions dashboard that's public-facing, but that's pretty limited to one specific metric. It doesn't even capture sort of our policy realm around environmental stewardship. Can we have a public-facing metrics dashboard that actually shows all of this amazing stuff and the incredible outcomes in these policy areas that the public could see and track?
We actually kind of do. I will say this, what we do have is intended to be a resource for the public. I'm going to pull it up here. Also a resource for you as council members to easily direct somebody to--
Is it socioeconomic indicators one?
No. It's on our website. Like I said, it's very manual, so, sorry, I should turn this over here so you can see. You go under Government, sorry, and you scroll over, oh my goodness, to Council Work Plan. We need to update this. This is the first quarterly one. So now after you accept this tonight, we will go in and update this. But you can click on each of these and you can open up each goal and it has these updates on there. So it's not a dashboard per se, but it is something that's a little easier to maneuver through than the PDF documents. There are some applications out there that have more of dashboard, like reporting tools for these, and that will be something the Assistant Town Manager will eventually take on and implementing just to save us some efficiency in doing this manual update as well.
Yeah, I mean, doing the manual updates, I just can't even imagine how time-consuming it would be. But I would also say, this isn't particularly consumer-friendly. And even the question I asked, like, how many workforce units, housing units do we add this year? Like, we should be able to tell the public that pretty easily. And so that's kind of why I'm asking, like, if we anticipate, it's not really in the work plan right now, I get that. So I guess I'm bringing it up because I think it's important for transparency and accountability.
Yeah, this is the kind of easy step we took, easy to get something better than saying, go find the council staff report on November 24th and go through 100 pages of attachments.
It's a first step.
Yeah. But it will take time and it isn't in the work plan, but we do hope to get something better. And I can't say for sure, we haven't been through all the systems. I don't know if we would find a system that would get to that level of specificity in terms of workforce housing data in this kind of context, but on our housing pages, eventually we could have dashboards on there that would get there.
Can I just, on the housing, I felt like in the community development report, and I was just trying to go back in our agendas, that it had, it wasn't all in one place, but it had each different program.
We were trying to pull it, we know we answered that question recently, I just don't have the number, we don't remember it off the top of--
Yeah, I mean, I did just pull the 2024 annual report. And the little bit of the challenge is that we do it based on when we do final occupancy. And so sometimes the year they're actually built versus when we final out and count the final occupancy is a little bit different. But the Donner Lake Six project was completed last year with six units. And then the Industrial Way Mixed-Use Project was also completed. So that's all we have as far as when we did the 2024 annual report. That was nine units in the Industrial Way.
And then we have, of course, our T-HAP units that we purchased through the T-HAP program.
Yeah, while we're on the topic, we're averaging about 50 units a year on the Leased Locals Program. First year of the Rooted Renters Program was 24 units. So far this year is 35 units. I believe on the inclusionary and workforce ordinance, we're over 500 units. I think it's about 550. And then on the low-income tax credit housing, once Pacific Crest Commons goes in, we'll be at about 612 units.
That's total units. I'm curious on what we're building year over year.
Okay.
So just a different, a little different.
Well, that's in the community report every year.
Yeah, we're trying to pull it up, we just don't have it up.
It's okay, we can move on.
Yeah, all right.
We do have an answer on the acreage question, if you want that. So it's 1.3 acres that were added, about 1.2 on South Shore Drive, just in the right of way. And the total project was over nine, so.
Yeah, there's tables in the community development report that actually go back. You can do a year-by-year comparison on what's approved, what's built.
But isn't it sort of interesting that we have this as a priority and we can't come up with the answers easily, including for our community? Like, that's an issue for transparency.
You just pull up the community development report.
And you want all of our constituents to do that? So I'm just saying, my perspective is that that is an issue for transparency.
Those who are interested can ask and find out, there's a way of doing it.
I think we get the point.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Councilmember, maybe on the dashboard, before we leave that, did you have anything to add on a dashboard for what's happening on our greenhouse gas emissions?
No.
I know you worked on that quite a bit.
Yeah, not directly, but I plan to have some more as I'm starting to work on that internally.
Okay, Councilmember Romek.
I already asked my question.
Okay, then it's Vice Mayor Klosak.
Just curious, what types of messages are you sending out on WhatsApp? And how often?
We're sending things like updates on upcoming workshop, similar to some of the announcements that we're sharing on social media and through other channels.
Okay, great, thank you. Erin, of course, I have some questions for you. Come on up, girlfriend. The Truckee weatherization program, has that been pushed off or was that always, was that the original deadline that we were going to do June 2027, the target?
So we did anticipate it would last through that fiscal year when we brought the program to council for approval earlier this year. We're still finalizing the program development stage right now, and we are hoping to be able to actually launch that early next year. But we're still working, there's a lot of details, it's a very complicated program, so we're still finalizing all of that.
It is, agreed, okay. And then the retrofit incentive program, it says the target date is December 2025, but it's only 10% complete. But we've identified a vendor to develop this program. Can you give me a little bit more color on that?
Sure, is that for the heat pump air conditioning incentives?
Develop user-friendly online platform.
Yes, okay, so that's for our incentive finder platform, yes. To be clear, that progress update is as of September 30th. So that is something we've made substantial progress since that date on, and we do still anticipate that that will be live by the end of this calendar year.
Excellent, thank you. That's very exciting. Now the heat pump air conditioning incentive program, that's been pushed off to March of 2026, 75% complete. What are our outstanding items on that that we need to finalize?
Sure, that's one of our grant-funded projects with our California Energy Commission Grant. So we've had a little bit of reshuffling of the timeline between those projects just to accommodate a number of factors with our staff capacity and needing to meet some other deadlines with our other grant-funded projects. We are, it's taking a little bit longer than we originally anticipated to get that full program proposal. So given that there are limited opportunities for council meetings near the end of this year, we still have some work to do and we want to do a little bit more stakeholder engagement once we receive that full program proposal before bringing that to council.
Stakeholder engagement, is that back with the decarbonization group?
That would be primarily with CAT, our Contractors Association, and other folks who would be, would have the expertise about those types of retrofits to provide some input before we bring that proposal.
Okay, and then I can't, I don't know which one it is on here, but just in general, I know we've got our weatherization program, it's underway. And when do we expect kind of a report out on hopefully some successes through that program?
Sure, so we are hoping to launch that program in the first quarter of next year. And then there would be, applications would be open for a period of time and there would be, you know, a process to review the eligibility. The first step in actual implementation is the site assessments. And so there are a number of steps that have to happen before those upgrades would actually be complete. So we don't anticipate, we would have report, any kind of implementation phase report until the end of next construction season, when those repairs have had a, and upgrades have had a chance to actually be implemented.
Okay, my apologies, I thought that that had, that part of that had already started and we were in the implementation phase, but we have not started it.
No, we are still finishing up the program design phase. And part of that is now that we are entering winter, we are not, it's, you know, we are trying to time the program launch around the construction season.
Right, thank you very much. Those are all my questions.
And did you ask about the, when will we see the next inventory, greenhouse gas inventory, when's that scheduled?
So we're doing municipal operations inventories annually. We will start the next one early next year. Data isn't usually, like, all of the data that we need isn't released until near the end of each calendar year. And then the next community-wide inventory isn't until, for the 2025 year. So there's about a 15-month delay on getting all of the data we need for that. So we wouldn't begin work on doing the community-wide inventory for 2025 until early 2027.
Thank you, Erin, thank you. This is my first questions, maybe just question, would be for Alfred on the overpass over the railroad. And while you're walking up there, Alfred, I saw, I realized the trolley was not part of the assignment, but it was brought up. And I'm trying to project out, this could easily be a decade to 15 years before a bridge, an overpass could be built, I'm assuming. Is that a correct estimate?
I'm just using an average for the type of transportation project, but when you add in, there would be a NEPA process, which is National Environmental Policy Act and a CEQA, and a CEQA process, which is California Environmental Quality Act process, then that alone will add years into the process. So yes, it would be a while.
Okay.
And also just cobbling together the dollars, which are the dollars you saw on there were in the 20s.
Right, right. So I'm thinking out that time period and we're going to have the Bridge Street improvements done within a two to three years. I mean, I know they're pushed out again because of the railroad. And then West River Street might build out by then or at least get started. I could ask Carissa to get a little closer to the podium to weigh in on that. But that could really affect the demand for crossing into downtown and how people might approach downtown. And I don't suppose your committee talked about it. I guess that's my question, does the committee think about how is it going to be after all the signalization and ease of pedestrian access occurs on Bridge Street? And then what's going to be the impact of the build-out of West River Street on the need for an overpass versus a trolley?
Yeah, it was brought up by our committee. They did want to make sure that this didn't preclude or take priority over those improvements. So we did put that figure in the actual document as well. It does show this holistic kind of infrastructure improvement map. This does show this as being a critical missing link once everything is built out. So one of the concerns really was in the committee was, you know, where does this fit into that bigger puzzle and bigger piece? And we did talk about the CIP process and capital improvement and bringing up projects, about how the project would potentially be prioritized amongst those other improvements as well.
Okay, so let me, my only other question then is, we could experiment with a trolley or a driverless trolley between now and two decades from now?
Absolutely, and with TARD Connect, you could do that tomorrow. You could create a zone downtown and now we don't have to have the fixed route and have to buy a specialized vehicle as well. So again, it doesn't, it's not mutually exclusive from this type of improvement.
Okay.
It wouldn't serve the bicyclists as well as it would the pedestrians, obviously.
Okay, right, right. Well, they could bicycle.
They could.
Okay, and thank you very much for the email summaries on the committee reports. Those were very thorough and clear. They really help to follow the progress of the committee's superb work.
It was a very efficient process and we had a very good group of people and a very good consulting firm.
Okay, now, thank you, Alfred. Now, on the managed access and floodplain restoration, Carissa, maybe you could get a little closer to the podium. I, my, one of my concerns is, goes back to the original 2003 strategic plan where they talked about the need to do an ecological hydrologic assessment before they got into the development side of planning. And I sort of see the same thing happening here in terms of where do we want managed access, where is the river restoration going? I almost see that as something we want to know in part of deciding, how does the, where can the redevelopment go that has the minimal impact on the riparian condition? Is that, am I accurate enough so far? You're nodding your head.
Yes, yes, I agree with what you're saying. And I will also share that we have three members of the Truckee River Legacy Foundation here. So depending where we're going with questions, we might have them come comment as well.
Okay, so we can look forward to some comments on that probably. Okay, and then I understand, Jen, you were saying one of the options is just to put a cap on what staff time might be allocated to work on this. And then the real question is how much staff time would be required in the event we, the grant were received, who shoulders the burden of implementation?
Correct. I mean, I think this is a unique opportunity that's come forward. We didn't expect that in putting the work plan together. Fully recognize that it's in alignment with the R3 playbook. So trying to figure out how we can support the effort, yet still not put you in a position of having to make a trade-off yet until we know if the grant is accepted and then maybe better understand what the partner-- better understand what the partnership would look like. So some parameters would be helpful for us if you wanted to support the grant and move that piece forward. And then just acknowledgement that that might mean something different should the grant be awarded, and that depending on the timeline of that, there could be other solutions, right? We might be able to work with a consultant for our piece of the partnership. And, you know, we just don't know at this point.
Okay. And then the next, my next question has to do with T-HAC. I saw where they're talking about needing weekly meetings of a, it's a new acronym.
Pilot Coordination Team.
Pilot Coordination Team, PCT. And I realize from personal experience that the police chief and the town manager are the two staff people who are having to put in time on this. We're past the planning stage. We have a policy in place. It's a matter of implementation, and we're getting down to a level where we may not need to have essentially two of the three highest people in our town staff participating in weekly meetings.
I think that's a fair summary. I do also think that we are in this, you know, very trial phase, where we want to make sure that we're really aware of any challenges that are happening, particularly if the site does not work out, if the lease does not go through, then we kind of are back to the drawing board on what are other options. I envision at some point, and I don't exactly know when, that the assistant town manager at a minimum would be an alternate to me, and we'd be able to trade off depending on schedules, because there's frequently scheduling conflicts that we're having, you know, it's a big group, so it's easier for myself or the chief to rearrange one meeting versus 15 people trying to rearrange something. I'll let Danny speak to his thoughts from a police perspective, but I do think this pilot year, it's going to be really critical, whether it's the chief or the captains, to be very involved in whatever community concerns are coming up. You know, the goal would be, if this advances into a multi-year center, because it's successful, that it is a different level of staff that is the day-to-day contact.
Okay. Do you have anything to add, Chief?
Yeah, I just think it's going to be important during initial launch to be very engaged with that process and to be able to react quickly to any type of community concerns that happen. Not that a police captain couldn't do that, but in order to really see it through, I think initially, until it launches and people are more comfortable with it, that we can transfer them.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. And my last question is for James Blattler.
Well, James is making his way up there. I'll just say, I think what you're hearing the chief and I echo is, you know, we're very aware that this is new to the community in terms of the navigation center, aware that, of the need and really the desire to have this be successful, and we want to support that in any way we can.
Thank you. James, is part of the evacuation work you described earlier, will that include work on the signs for know-your-zone stations?
So, so part of our scope of work that we are requesting the contractor to address is a number of, any which way that we can enhance our evacuation, and including in that list is including but not limited to signage. And so will be something that will be looked at. I also want to reinforce that this plan or this study process is going to be very robust with community outreach. It's one of our biggest expectations with this process. And so we'll make sure that community members will have an opportunity to voice what their concerns are and what their recommendations are, which we do anticipate signage being one of those things. But even without that, it is something that we have asked whoever the selected consultant to, that gets hired on, to look at.
So do you think we could have signs up before the next fire season?
We will see how the results of the recommendations are there, but I wouldn't anticipate those recommendations be completed before next fire season. And so the likelihood of that being a recommendation for their improvement, and then also putting that into a project that gets then implemented, I wouldn't say is very feasible to occur before this fire season. And so if there is an interest to take a harder look at this, I wouldn't recommend it from my office's standpoint, so we can evaluate the number of actions that may be recommended holistically and prioritize all those. However, if there is direction to take a harder look at that from council, we can certainly take a look into that.
Mayor, your microphone, please.
I'm sorry. Can you tell me, just standing here now, what, if any, reservations you have or concerns you have about putting up signs at the entrance to neighborhoods identifying their evacuation zones?
So one of the concerns on getting a signage plan rolled out is the sheer number of signs and the confusions between the zones. So if you're just talking about evac, you first take a further step back, is what do we want these signs to actually show? Is it to show evacuation routes, ways to evacuation corridors? Do we want the signs to show evacuation zones? If it is evacuation zones, it's not, the way that they are designed and developed, crossing from one zone to another can be complicated, and the sign deployment of that would take a lot of analysis. I know that we have taken a look at just the sheer number of signs based on intersections, and I believe it was in the hundreds of signs that would need to be deployed out townwide. And so you take a look at that, and then, you know, it is a pretty big geographic footprint that the town of Truckee has. It would be a significant project to take that on in such a short amount of time.
Thank you. Yeah, please, go ahead.
Not for James, but thank you. And I'll just say on the sign thing, my house is almost right on the border of two different zones. So I think that poses a tricky issue where, how would you designate which zone? That's not what my question was. But Alfred, since you're still sitting here, I actually had a question on the, you know, the pedestrian bridge. Could this be part of the active transportation plan and kind of understanding how something like that would fit into priorities for the community of pedestrian and bicycle connections?
You are 100% correct.
Okay. Thank you. Great. That's it.
And we will be back in January to discuss the document itself and the findings and acceptance, and then seek direction on where to go. And the ATP is the next thing on our list that would look at this whole comprehensive network and what's been built and what is now be proposed, and then how this would potentially be a link to those proposed facilities and existing facilities.
Great. Thank you.
Is there any, are there any other follow-up questions? I see none. Now's time for public comment. If you'd please come to the podium, you'll have three minutes, address your comments to the council, please. Say your name at the beginning, if you would.
Jan Holen, President of the Truckee River Legacy Foundation, Honorable Mayor and Council Members, thank you for considering our grant support request. And most importantly, wanted to thank staff. You know, there has only, we've probably tied up, I guess, a sum total of a couple hours of their time so far, maybe three, pulling together the proposal, but the, or at least coming to get support. But the Truckee River Legacy Foundation, as you know, it's been around for 27 years. We were working on, you know, our biggest success, but not the only success, was certainly getting the legacy trail going. And in the last, in the last year, we've embarked on a strategic planning process, and we have some really engaged board members. Some of them are here. Our Vice President Teresa is right there. She's also, we have some real depth of experience. Lisa Wallace, as you know, she's also on our, on our board. Jeff Lux, who is currently serving on the Lahat and Water Board, is on our board. And we are excited about just getting some momentum with, as Councilmember Henderson said, we really want to build some stuff or protect, you know, protect the river. And, you know, the first or the next step is really taking a more granular approach to the managed access and floodplain restoration plan. I want to emphasize that that is going to be as much about protecting the river from unmitigated erosion and access. And our goal is really to look at, try to come up with, say, 15 to 20 potential projects, narrow it down to three to five, then do a little bit more detailed study of that, some concept proposals. But I think the important part is we don't, we'd love to have the town of Truckee very involved, but the reality is, you don't have time for that, nor is it absolutely necessary. You know, we plan to use our staff, Connie Gallippi has experience with this, has great project management ability. We have the depth of experience within our team to manage consultants, to engage with stakeholders, to engage with the town of Truckee. The timing for this, you know, we're, if we're fortunate to get this grant, it's not going to be awarded until next summer, and then we'll have really several years to implement it. My goal is to get it, our goal is to get it done as quickly as possible, but I think we're talking 15, 20 hours in the next year. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening. It says it's green. Am I just really quiet? Okay, I can just speak louder. Okay, I can do that. You guys also look a lot better than I do. I'm sorry. I went home and changed already, and I got comfortable. So I appreciate you guys still being here and looking really good doing it. True. I want to talk to Jan's question regarding the ecology and the hydrogeology of the sites. Yes, we would love a river-wide corridor study. That would be amazing. It would give us tons of information. It would also cost a lot of money. And so if we can whittle down areas that have a better opportunity and better chances of being successful sites, taking other factors into account on work that the town has already done, that other consultants and other agencies have already done, and pulling that together, we can then do those ecology studies and the hydrogeology studies on a smaller site, which will save us a bunch of money and be able to be very focused in the work that we're doing. So that's why we want to prioritize taking the whole corridor, trying to identify where the priority sites are, ranking them on their feasibility, their ability to actually meet the objectives that we're trying to meet. And then, once we're there, we'll have to take those concept plans to a full plan, and that's when I would recommend doing those more detailed studies that are needed to make something really viable. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. Any other public comment? They will bring it back to council for deliberation, and if you have questions you want to ask staff as part of the deliberation, just fire away, because I can see that we might. Which one do you want us to handle first? The blue one or the green one?
You know, that's mayor's prerogative, and you can pick.
Who wants to go first? They get to pick which one we do.
I'm happy to go first, and I did have a few comments not related to blue and green. Are you all right, mayor, if I do those as well? I did just want to thank Alfred for your efforts. I know we'll get another presentation on this, so I won't spend a lot of time, but I served on the CRC, so participated in the discussions around this. And I asked the question on the ATP, because I think there is interest in this, but still I wouldn't say overwhelming push to make this happen super quick. And I think there was a lot of discussion around what else could be done. Is this the biggest priority? So that's why I think it's great you're already thinking that ATP. That said, I will say, last Friday for the tree lighting ceremony, we got there late, and I said, let's go park at the parking lot and take the bridge across town. So we did, and then ended up on West River Street, and then had to walk all the way around to get downtown. And I was thinking, man, it'd be really cool if there was a pedestrian bridge, and I could watch the tree lighting from above. So I just was thinking about it last Friday. Let's see. Just one comment on roadside vegetation and the challenges we saw, you know, and I know Councilmember Henderson, you asked some questions, but that only two of the 70 properties. I was just going to put it out there. I think what the staff came up with, with dark skies and a photo contest, not that I'm saying we want a roadside vegetation photo contest, but the, but the creativity, because I think that struck me too, of, I think, a lot of community members still don't understand the importance of doing this work. So would just continue to encourage staff to be thinking about these other creative ways, to be thinking about some of our big things. And then, you know, Councilmember Henderson, just, you know, the comment on big things built, I agree. Whenever we can move forward on things quickly, and I would say, I know we have the staff also to make things happen. And in my five years on council, we've had two new roundabouts, a park, bridges, a new program. So it's incredible the amount of stuff you all accomplish. So keep up the good work. And so I'm excited about continuing to work with the community to prioritize on what are the big things we want to see. Okay. Now, on to the blue. I'll start with the blue. Appreciate Jan and other members being here, and you look great, Teresa. You look, you know, you'd fit in up here. We're all Truckee people. I think it's a great opportunity. I'm fine if we want to say limiting staff time to 15 or 20 hours is what I heard Jan say today to start the process. Again, I served on R2SC and heard from the committee and the community that want to get into floodplain issues, want to start talking more about access opportunities. So utilizing a grant, utilizing great work of an organization that exists. I think we just talked about previously, you know, without David Diamond, we wouldn't be where we were with cloud permit software. So again, I see this as an opportunity. Let's reach outside of our town and utilize strengths and talents and expertise. I think start with the, let's apply for the grant with them. If it's, if it happens, then understanding we probably will have to prioritize, you know, how we weigh that out. But for now, 15 to 20 hours of support in moving the process forward, I think makes sense. And then on green, I mean, this is a tricky one. I don't think that today I can say, let's keep it to X amount of hours or anything like that. But I do really appreciate the updates that Chief was bringing to council on a regular basis, just as a presentation. So that was even a thought, too, if you're getting to a place where you're feeling like this is a lot more staff time than we thought, just keep coming back to council and sharing that with us, so we can, we can help support. I think that's it for now.
Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you. I'm going to jump right to the blue and green, because I think I had enough questions and comments earlier. I think on the managed river access, I'm also really comfortable moving forward with 15 staff hours. And I will be thrilled if we get the grant. I think you guys will be too. And then I think, you're right, we're just going to have to have another conversation about staff time if the grant is awarded, and what that means for all of the incredible work items we have in the work plan. But I don't think that should be a limiting factor in saying, go, no, go, like it's a go. For T-HAC, I guess I have a follow-up question. How many hours on average are you, is this, between the two of you, how many hours on average are you spending per week or per month over the last few months, for example?
I'll go first, Danny. You can, you can correct me. It is, it is a fair amount. If you're saying on average per month, like, there's some weeks that are more intensive than others. So I would say both of us combined are probably somewhere in the six to 10 hours a week.
I'd say 10 to 12.
10 to 12.
Six to 10 or 12 hours per week?
Both of us together.
Okay.
So five-ish apiece.
Okay. Even where it is right now, do you think that is a realistic assessment of average hours per week between the two of you going forward? Or you think it's going to creep up as we move into implementation, assuming we get the site? Any expectation? I know this is so new. It's hard to know.
Yeah. I would say on a PD side that we're probably going to see more hours that's going to be needed and required during launch.
I think that's correct. It might not just be more of Danny's hours, but just PD staff, officers responding, CSOs potentially. I suspect that we'll have maybe more requests come in from either, for either Braun or Andrea in terms of supporting communications, maybe translation outreach to Spanish-speaking community members, and probably more impact, whether it ends up, you know, Code might get a call, that would probably get diverted to PD, but I think our phone lines might be busier with questions, comments, concerns.
Is this, it's hard to say a number of hours for this, right? Because obviously, like, this is a very sort of intensive thing. Is it, is this level of effort sustainable from a capacity perspective, given Is it, is this level of effort sustainable from a capacity perspective, given everything else that you both do?
Long-term, I would say no.
Sort of a gating feature, right?
Yeah, I mean, long-term, I would say no. I think, you know, as we were saying, we understand the sensitivity around this, it's the first time in the community we've had something like this, and it's important to provide that level of support to help it be successful, and hopefully, you know, for it to be successful. If it is successful, whether it's at that location or a different location, I mean, from an ongoing perspective, no. We would either have to, I don't even think it would be realistic to say, like, this isn't town manager, or the captains would maintain that, like, if there's going to be ongoing intensive involvement, we'll have to look at other resources for that. I don't know what that looks like today.
So, is one option just for the purposes of the work plan to ensure that it is, you know, a formal item in the work plan? And is it just, I mean, you don't want us to tell you actual number of hours, do you? That's not what you really want.
No, I don't. And I think we were struggling, and we got the proposal, I think it was right when I was writing the staff report, and we were maybe the week that Danny's team, Danny and all the team were updating the work plan about the expectation for start planning for Phase Two and community engagement and support, and, you know, didn't want to wait until December 9th to come back with a question when we maybe had more information. So, I think we're just trying to be really transparent. There's a big unknown with this. We need to support it to be successful, and it may eventually cause impacts that have to shift something else. And we've had those before in the past, right? Like, we had the cyber attack, that was a big shift. We've had other things that have done the same thing, but this one we know is potentially coming, so we want to disclose that and share that. And we will come back if we're at a point where we just can't do anymore, or we need some more resources to support.
And maybe as part of, if we get, you know, as additional updates come to council, maybe part of those updates can simply be, this is kind of how much time we spent on it over the past month, just so the community sees that, I mean, so that we have a sense of what that capacity looks like.
We can do that. We do have, I was pulling it up, it's the very last item, I believe, in the housing section of the work plan that is specific to the T-HAC support. It's fairly vague, and I think we can keep it fairly vague, that's fine, and maybe just report out on those hours. We can certainly do periodic check-ins, like we've done before, per council member Romax's recommendation, and just try to keep open transparency and communication around the process. And this may be a mute point if we don't get site security. Anyways, we're probably back with what does going back to the drawing board look like for the town. And also, do, you know, don't want to not mention that the county's invested a lot of effort, the community partners for T-HAC, this isn't specific to us. Everybody's putting in a lot of time, and probably fair to say more so than originally anticipated.
Vice Mayor Kluivstad.
Well, I'll start with that one, just because this was very great questions, council member Henderson, thank you for that. What I'd like to articulate to staff is, we do see that this is very much so above and beyond for this sole reason of we all want this to be successful. And so, I really want to recognize and thank you for that. That being said, I think it is really important to make sure that we have some checks and balances on what are, what the expectations from the other partners are on us versus what their responsibilities are. And I know there has been a little bit of blurring of that line, so wherever you need support and helping to fortify that, I guess that's what, that's what we're here to do. So, that would be my request, is just make sure those lines are clear, and we're, and all partners are clear on those delineations. Yeah. Okay, so, I'm going to pull back a little bit. I just, in going through these updates every quarter, it's, it really is amazing, the amount of work that we do, and I wish that I could talk about each item and each staff person and thank them specifically for what they do, but we'd be here until tomorrow, so I won't. But in a big way, we are kind of captive to our own success. We have deployed so many incredible, successful programs that are now ongoing programs, and these are really elevating significantly our community and our community's health and stabilization, and so I really want to recognize the fact that what this represents isn't just a snapshot in time, it is the evolution of many, many successes over the years, and I'm really proud of that, and we all should be. I'm really grateful for the Spanish newsletter, that is something I've been hoping for, for a long time, so thank you so much. I hope those subscribers continue to expand, and we continue to reach our Spanish-speaking community members on a more robust and equal playing field. Erin, great job on the water bottle ban and the education, and it's really extraordinary. I know how much, I mean, actually, I don't know how much work it was, but looking at all the steps that you guys went through and being on part of that committee and understanding the care that you took to really work with every individual seller, to make sure they understood what the program was about, what it wasn't about, and so that they could be successful as well. I think that's another really huge success story. In terms of the managed river access and floodplain, this is, to me, a situation where we want to keep the door open. We want to keep the possibility of being able to further preserve and protect our river as accessible as possible to us. So, absolutely, I'm supportive of 15 to 20 hours to, to write letters of support, or co-sign, or provide strategic planning for that, for that effort. I'm really excited about it, and I too hope that you guys get the, get the grant. So, I think we want to move forward in that. And then, I'll, I'll just say that for the Muni EV plan, I know we're going to have another separate presentation, but it's, and it says it in the staff report, so it, but it bears mentioning that doing the bare minimum to meet California Air Resources Board is, I mean, that is the bare minimum, and we absolutely will do that. But it would, that would not be consistent with our general plan and the commitment that we made to our community. So, I, and I know we can't go all in on everything because the technology doesn't exist yet, but I trust the staff in the town to push the envelope where they can and find creative solutions and, and really accelerate that, accelerate that transition wherever possible. And then, in terms of the other things, I want to say how significant I think the organizational assessment has been. It wasn't necessarily a work plan item from us, this was a Gen work plan item, but I think we all can see the efficiency, the efficiencies that have already happened because of this assessment, and now the ones that we are about to embark on with our new software platform, and then continuing unfolding efficiencies and improvements for our community, all because Jen had the vision that, hey, we really should take a bigger, broader look at what we're doing here and making sure that it makes sense for all of us involved. So, I think this has been the best investment we could have made in the future of success, future success of Truckee, to be a thriving and functional community. And I just really want to thank staff for all of their time and commitment to that, because I know that was really hard. That was a lot. And it was, and working with David Diamond on his assessment and all of the surveys as well, to combine that, those all together, to give our community and council a full perspective of that. So, that not being highlighted in here, I really wanted to highlight it myself, that I think that was one of the most important accomplishments of recent time. So, that's all. Thank you.
Okay, my fellow council members expressed my sentiment and opinion really well. The, and I was even thinking, in terms of doing the work on the river, the managed access and floodplain restoration, we could just move that cloud permit up ahead, and we'd probably save more than enough hours to work on the grant application, which is all to say, I think the real thing is, what are we going to take away from? That the advantages of working with the Legacy Foundation are pretty apparent. They have professional expertise with Lisa Wallace, Teresa Garrison, and I think Jake Hudson would put in time too. He's a hydraulist. We have some really skilled local people who we could leverage with a little bit of town input, the question being, does the town have the time and what suffers as a result? On, on the T-HAC, I'm just really aware of the tremendous amount of time that's already been put in, and so I'm frustrated by how challenging it's been, but I recognize, we have 11 members in T-HAC. We have Nevada County and the hospital putting in money and time. It's the county that's negotiating the lease agreement, it's the county that's negotiating with the Volunteers of America for the operation. The town needs to stick with it for that additional reason, not just because we need to do something about the homeless, but because we're part of a larger group that is counting on us to stay the course. So, I don't know if that tells you how I see formalizing things, I'm just sensitive to having the highest people in our organization having to spend time on it, and I'm wondering for some of the more mundane things, if there's not a lower-level person who can be involved to give you more time to work on the managed access and river restoration. Anyway, thank you.
So, there's no motion, but let me sum up and maybe ask one question. At our, I think it was our previous council meeting, one or two ago, we brought forward a question on various policies, and even though you have not adopted this yet, there was direction to bring grant applications to council before applying. I would not intend to do that for the managed river access plan, because I feel like we're getting that direction tonight. Depending on what that looks like, if it's a letter of support, we would just run that through the Ledge Committee, if everybody's okay with that. And I'm hearing about 15 to 20-ish hours of staff time to support that. And then, for T-HAC, I think, you know, I agree, Mayor Zabriski, less asking for that hard, like how many hours, but just acknowledging, there's still a lot of work that maybe we didn't originally think was going to go into this part of the year, but we, we need to support the partners and just the success of the pilot. So, we'll continue to do updates, come back if we feel like we're not quite sure of the investment, and get some direction if there's something more specific. At that time, I did find the item in the work plan is just support T-HAC 2.0, and we listed it as 50% complete. It sounds like maybe we're okay kind of keeping that, but just giving more detailed updates in that about where we're at, unless there's something more specific that comes And then, I'm not hearing that we are way off base with the key assumptions for the municipal EV plans, so we're charging ahead to finalize that draft to bring forward. You'll get another presentation on the feasibility study and maybe some recommendations on that. And then, I brought this slide back up, to your point, vice mayor, we took a little bit longer with this presentation tonight, but it really kind of struck us and me, as I was reading all the staff's updates, that this is turning, you know, your vision as policymakers and starting to come into reality. So, that was the point of this opening slide, very intentionally, that you are starting to see the results of all the programs that you've put into place in the past five years. I hope that comes through in the document, well, maybe not the most friendly and accessible way, we'll get there, but there's a lot of work that the staff has done to bring these projects forward, and I'm glad that you're able to celebrate those. And that's all I have. I don't think I need a motion.
I have one question. Whenever we get the council priority work plan updates, they're always at the end of the meeting, and there's so much in these, and so much that we're doing, and so much that I would love, and we have a more full house at 5:36, not 8:39 at night. I don't know if we've ever thought about that, but there's a lot of incredible stuff that you show in these quarterly updates.
Sorry. You are echoing Vice Mayor Kluivstad's comments, and we do, we've always put them at the end, just, we've tried to put items at the start of the agenda that we know or expect there to be either CAT, or the members of the public that want to comment, so they're not here that late, and it's, it's a balance. We moved it to this meeting, thinking we might actually get to it earlier, and it would be a shorter meeting, but you're right, it is worth having it further, closer up in the agenda, so maybe there are more people. It's a good point.
And thank you for the written material. I don't, I don't know if anyone mentioned that, but the way the attachments were organized and the formatting, it made everything much clearer, they were more bite-sized pieces there, it really helped for us to digest it. Thanks. Any final thoughts on 7.4? Not tonight, anyway. Okay, then let's go to council reports.
I can jump in.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, so, last week, on Thursday, I was down in Nevada City for my monthly LAFCO meeting, and I want to share that S.R. Jones, the Nevada County LAFCO Executive Officer, is soon to be retiring. S.R. was hired by Nevada County LAFCO in 1993 at its, as its clerk, and within a year was promoted to executive officer. And over 32 years, she has been just incredibly instrumental in preparing, facilitating, leading Nevada County LAFCO through consideration and approval of numerous projects, and perhaps most importantly, to all of us in this room, including the incorporation of the Town of Truckee in 1993. So, she's just been an incredible mentor and a leader throughout the entire state when it comes to LAFCO, which is just a wonky thing that you know quite well, I know, mayor. And so, if you've had the pleasure of meeting her, thank her for her 32 years of service to our community. And then, my only other, and I want to give a few highlights from this one, but I did have my first three-day intensive as part of the Abundance Network Elected Fellowship. We were in Tempe, Arizona, last weekend. This is the inaugural year of the fellowship. So, there are 20 elected officials from across the nation, from Washington State to Tennessee, Hawaii to Colorado, North Carolina, Kentucky, and California. So, three days of very intensive training, three days of really sharing successes and failures and driving outcomes for our communities, and as part of it, I'll be doing an 18-month project with the fellowship on workforce housing, specific to Town of Truckee, and some more details on that to come. I also wanted to share just a couple other, two, two other brief highlights from it, because it was really amazing. So, we visited a, the first ever purpose-built car-free mixed-use development in the United States in Tempe called Cul-de-sac. It was really incredible. So, they have 300-plus unit studios to three bedrooms for rent, they have several more phases coming, which will be for-sale products. They have 24 small businesses on the first floor, it's four floors, so mixed-use, and the way that they incubated those businesses was incredible. When it was a dirtlot construction site, they brought in container ships and went out to the community and said, "We're going to have these community nights," brought in a ton of food trucks, made it a festival, and people who had small businesses from home could set up in the container ships. And so, they incubated them into these 5,000-square-foot retail spaces. Just truly incredible, 24 of them filled up immediately. Also, an incredible, sort of, some repurposed development as well, so there was sort of a car and tire auto shop nearby. It's a restaurant now, a beautiful restaurant. So, it was just really incredible to see how they worked with the fire department to ensure access for emergencies, but no cars at all in the development, right on a rail line. That was pretty amazing. The city of Mesa is working with them to redevelop a 27-acre site that sits vacant in their downtown right now, they're working in Atlanta, and they also do microdevelopments of one to three acres in size. So, just really, really inspiring, and seeing Mr. Holland in the audience, it definitely made me think of some of the conversations that we've had over the years. And then, as a cohort, we talked a lot about And then as a cohort, we talked a lot about just successes and trying really different, sometimes hard, but also innovative things in different jurisdictions to actually build more housing, kind of the thread of earlier, like build big, build more, just make sure we are actually housing our workforce so we aren't losing the social fabric of our community. And one example that I wanted to share, the Bellingham, so Bellingham, Washington, city council passed an interim ordinance on January 13th of this year to eliminate minimum parking requirements for new housing developments. They granted an extension to it in November of this year, and the goal was really to encourage more housing construction by freeing up land that would otherwise be used for parking, which we all know is very expensive and can drive up development and housing costs, and also just to make more walkable, accessible neighborhoods. So now developers are deciding how much parking is needed for a project instead of having to meet a minimum number of required spaces set by the city, and they're using this period to basically evaluate the results, like what types of outcomes are they getting as part of this. So I'm excited to be able to talk to their mayor about how this is going forward for them. Okay, moving on, a lot of time on Holidays Not Forgotten, which you heard about earlier, but again, if you want to sponsor a child right here in Truckee this holiday season, please reach out to me, we have about 10 to 15 more children who need community sponsors. And what else? Downtown tree lighting was amazing, as always. Did we close the street last year for it? Do we never close the street? I have to ask.
Yeah, it was a soft closer, we are going to pivot and adjust next year.
I love that.
Yeah.
It was busy this year, like more busy than I think I've ever seen it, which was great. So thank you to everyone who made that happen.
Thank you. I'll jump in. Yes, the tree lighting was fantastic. Yeah, super fun, always great to see everybody out there, so thanks, everybody who put an effort for that great community event. Also, was it last week, I think, with Mayor Zabriski, we did an interview on 101.5 Truckee Tower Radio for, gotta pull that back out, on our gratitude awards. So we spoke about all five, plus the staff pick with the Washoe Tribe, really fun. Thanks to Bron again for helping us with all the info. But yeah, just a great opportunity to celebrate our community, and we also highlighted opportunities to get involved with these organizations too, so also put it out there, you know, to, for community to keep supporting. Then I attended the Commissions and Committee Party, soiree? Okay, sorry.
Soiree?
The official title. Fantastic party, I think, thank you Town Manager and Town Attorney for help supporting that party. And just, you know, for those folks that don't serve on a committee or a commission, I think this was the first time we've brought people together, and it was fun. Each of the committees and commissions got recognized for the work they've done over the past year, and just another great testament to the amount of incredible folks in our town who dedicate tons of volunteer hours to making our town better. So super great opportunity, look forward to doing that again, and I got to meet some folks that I have never met before, who are just started serving on various committees, so fantastic. Veterans Day Ceremony, great job, Mayor, as always, on that. And David West, our Nevada County Veterans Service Officer, was there. Thank you to every, all the staff members that I saw there, that I know it's your day off and you dedicate your time to being out and supporting the great community event. And I love the mountain bells when they sing the different themes, theme songs of each of the different military branches, and you get to see all the veterans that stand up and get recognized. So just another great opportunity to see our awesome community. And then last, I also presented at a college and career readiness at Truckee High School with ninth and 10th graders, and it was an opportunity to talk about local government, both working in local government, since I work in local government, as well as serve as an elected official. But Mrs. Cusson, the T-shirt, Lori, she said how all the other people have been, you know, in the private sector, so it was great to, you know, give insight into, you know, if you're thinking about a career in local government, what could that look like? And also put it out to them, all the students, of you don't have to wait, you can get involved now, and how we have meetings frequently. And then at the end, I also put it back to them of what do you want to see in your community? And so, you know, having more places to go at night, and, you know, one kid brought up a movie theater, so talked about the rail yard. And then also, another kid brought up more benches along the trails, so that was interesting. But again, it was, it was great to hear from them on just some of the things that are important to them and opportunities for them to get involved. So, super, super fun. And that was it.
Vice Mayor?
I enjoyed the soiree. And meeting some of our volunteers for the first time and getting the opportunity to thank them for their service was a true pleasure. So thank you for, for holding that event so that we could recognize them all. It is really amazing when you tally all the people up and all the hours that they contribute. So we are, we live in a pretty amazing community, and everything else has been covered.
Yes, so I did do a presentation at Veterans Day, it was well-attended, nice weather, and then the luncheon at the Veterans Hall was a great opportunity for veterans to interact. There are about 5,000 veterans in our region, that includes North Lake Tahoe, and most of them are, how do I put it? They're not that, a lot of them, they don't try to stand out, kind of you have to find them. And talking about their experiences is not something they tend to enjoy or want to share with strangers. So it's really nice when you realize someone's a veteran to acknowledge their service, it's pretty easy to say thank you, it's just something to try and do. Then I attended the Nevada County Transportation Commission meeting on the 12th. There was a presentation on Nevada City Scenic Corridor Ordinance Proposal, and what was interesting is how, given all the work they did, there might be something we could borrow from their efforts when we talk about how to beautify the entrances to our town, because they had some really great ideas on how to improve roadways, and make them just more scenic and attractive. Then we approved the 20-year regional transportation plan, that's something that's updated every five years on a rolling basis. Attended the T-HAC Coalition Meeting on the 12th as well, we had an update from the veteran, on, excuse me, Volunteers of America, the lease update, the partner, potential partnership agreement, and community concerns. And I think over the next few months, if we put aside the lease agreement and the agreement with Volunteers of America, there's going to be, need to be a lot of time spent with community members, maybe enlisting them to actually participate in making that a more pleasing neighborhood, from what it is right now. I made a presentation at the Rotary Senior Gratitude Luncheon, that's where Rotary expresses gratitude to seniors by hosting a really nice luncheon at the Martis Camp Event Barn, and then pointing out how we seniors should be expressing gratitude for all the things we enjoy in life. Then Lindsay mentioned our radio interview, and finally, I attended the Nevada County Community Leadership Panel, where we talked about local government to about 20 people who are in this annual leadership program for Nevada County. That was with the other, the mayors of Grass Valley, Nevada City, and then Heidi Hall, who's the Chair of the, of the County Board of Supervisors. Finally, when you're thinking, if you want to donate to the organization that Councilmember Henderson was talking about for the holiday season, also think about Truckee Community Cares. They served over 1,000 families, or 1,000 individuals last year. They provide grocery store gift cards, toy or gift for each child, and warm jackets for each member of the family that come through at the rec center each year. They're a long-established program here, it used to be called Community Christmas Foundation. So there's a lot of really well-deserving groups in here to try to make things better for our community come the holidays. And with that, we can, we're going to adjourn to go into closed session, but I should read the items, and I don't know, council, do I need to ask for a public comment on these?
Yes, please.
Okay. We're going to go into closed session. Item 9.1 is a conference with real property negotiators on 10262 West River Street, we'll be talking with our negotiators. Item 9.2 is conference with real property negotiators, again, this is on parcel 019440 068. Under, both of these are under Government Code 54956.8. Is there anyone who wishes to make a public comment on these things before we go into closed session? I don't see anyone approaching the podium. One did, but he sat down. Okay, with that, we're adjourned until December.